Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I know that the time is short as we go through the warrant and get it prepared for the constables to post. So we will be doing that in this first half hour and I believe that the budget and the finance committee will be taking these seats at about 6:30 or sooner or whenever so we'll get rolling quickly. Ellen, do you want to give an overview of what you expect the board to do tonight in order to facilitate the getting ready for town meeting?
Yeah, so right now, as Maury mentioned, we're just signing the warrants. The constables are going to go ahead and post the warrants. And the income meeting starts at 6:30, which will be the public hearing. Basically, we have the finance committee booklet prepared and we will, the finance committee will be able to go through each article. They'll be able to announce their recommendations, what their recommendation is. They'll ask for the board's select recommendations and it will be open for discussion, any comments. And then, other than that, at the end of the night, when it's all said and done, we're going to try to keep track of all of these changes, if there are any changes, so that the night of town meeting will actually update this booklet for you guys or everybody. Orders, handout, follow orders for the night of town meetings will have up-to-date booklet with all of the recommendations or any changes as much as we can. So hopefully this town meeting will be very well prepared.
Hi, Chair.
So far appears that everybody is very well prepared. I think we're, I think Barry looks blessed.
Keep that comment, hold that comment, and I pray for that comment in about two weeks.
Madam Chair, thank you. So for this part of the meeting, what you want to do, what the select board should be doing is taking the actual warrant document. Well, not this one, but the one that the constable is signing right now.
Okay.
And so what you want to do is confirm that those are all of the articles you want to have on the warrant, that they're worded the way that you are, and then you want to take a vote to approve and sign the warrant.
So we don't have to do each individual article?
Not if you don't feel the need to.
We've been through this several times.
Yeah.
Probably were, okay. John?
And we're going to do that at the finance committee meeting.
Yes, anyway. Is it necessary at this time? We've basically taken a vote at our last meeting favorable, unfavorable, no, to be determined, whatever, at the town meeting. So should we re-vote on that? There's only two of us here this evening, but I think that some of them are pretty perfunctory for us.
Right, so for this, this particular vote, you're not voting as to whether or not to recommend a particular article. All you're doing is saying, this is the warrant, you know, we execute the warrant, it can be posted by the constable, and then that kicks off town meeting. And then when we go through the booklet with the finance committee, then the select board, you know, you can go through and you can vote and say, yes, we recommend favorable action on this one, not favorable action. And, and you know, if you want to wait until you have your third member, you know, you could do that next week also.
Okay.
But this part of it has to be done tonight.
Okay, so I think we're ready to go then. Moving on, and we have a copy of the warrant here and obviously the time and date of the town, annual town meeting is Tuesday, the 25th of June at 6:30 PM at the Ruggles Lane School. That has been pretty well posted around, so people probably are aware of that. Moving along, the perfunctory articles that would be Article 1, to see if the town will vote to choose all other town offices, agents and committees not elected by ballot and appointed or take any action relative thereto. Comments, questions? Seeing none, Article 2, to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the select board, the finance committee, the school committee and any other departments or committee and act thereupon or take any action relative thereto. Seeing no comments, moving on to Article 3, payment of bills from a prior fiscal year to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, a sum of money to pay for bills of a prior fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto. We do not have to use that article this year, but it is one that we usually include in case. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available source of funds, sums of money to the added to departmental budgets and appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from a sum of money for the operations and maintenance of the municipal water system for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, or take any other action thereto. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer a sum of money for the operations and maintenance of the municipal sewer system for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to pay town charges and expenses for the fiscal year beginning Janu- July 1, 2024, and vote to fix salaries and compensation of all elected officials of the town in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, effective July 1, 2024, and make all appropriations for same or take any other action thereto. To see if the town, Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to pay school charges and expenses for fiscal year July 1, 2024, and make all appropriations for the same or take any other action thereto. Now, Article 9, peg access cable related accounts, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of $110,000 from the peg access and capital and cable related fund to operate the public educational and governmental access and cable cable related fund established pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F 3/4 for fiscal year 25, and further to appropriate a portion of said funds to complete the Matrix broadband project and to install equipment on the third floor of the Henry Woods Building to record public meetings and anything incidental or related thereto, to take or take any action relative thereto. Article 10, revolving funds, to see if the town will vote to establish the spending limits for the town's revolving accounts pursu- established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and the town's bylaws, Chapter 48, Section 1, for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as shown in the table below. That table includes only one change and that I believe is the board of health adding an amount to that category of several thousand dollars. I know that that will be discussed. Everything else is the same as it was the previous year. Article 3, Article 11, the typical request for Chapter 90 grant approval, to see if the town will vote to accept any and all highway state assistance funds authorized by the legislature and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division under the so-called Chapter 90 Highway Assistance Program, to be expended for the maintenance, repair and construction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under the direction of the select board for work on the roads located on the state aid primary system approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, and further to authorize the treasurer's collector with the approval of the select board to borrow money from time to time during fiscal year 2025 up to the reimbursable amount for the period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, in anticipation of reimbursements of said highway assistance in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 6A, or take any other action relative thereto.
I can take over if you like.
You would like to, go right ahead.
I'll do it next time.
I'm good, I'm fast, I'm fast.
All right. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2, so as to impose a local sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town by a vendor at a rate of 0.75% of the gross receipts of that vendor from the sale of restaurant meals, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 13, purchase new cruiser for police department to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of $79,000 from the capital stabilization fund to, sorry, capital stabilization fund, a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new cruiser for the police department, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 14, Ruggles Lane School Improvement Project, to see if the town will vote to transfer the unused portion of the appropriation made pursuant to Article 15 from the November 26, 2012 special town meeting for the Ruggles Lane School Improvement Project to the principal portion of the debt exclusion payment for that project due in fiscal year 2025, or take any other action relative thereto. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the board of assessors overlay surplus account a sum of money to pay for the deficits in the following grant accounts, or take any other action relative thereto. One, CARES Act Grant. Two, Sidewalk Improvement Grant. Three, Economic Development Grant. And four, Open Space Recreation Grant. Article 16, DPW Water Sewer Union Contract, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, retained earnings accounts, a sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first year cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and Teamsters Union Local 170, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 17, Compensation for Part-Time Assessor, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of assessors to appoint one of its members to a paid part-time position under their supervision as allowed by General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 21A, to fix the compensation of such appointee and to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund such position or take any other action relative thereto. Article 18, a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Program for Improvement to High Plains Park. To see if the town will vote to adopt the following resolution relative to renovations and improvements to High Plains Park, would set improvements to be funded entirely by grant funds or take any other action relative thereto. A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Program for Improvements to High Plains Park. Whereas High Plains Park is by and far a community-wide asset and improvements to this facility are a town priority as evidenced in the most recent Open Space and Recreation Plan, and whereas High Plains Park upgrades guided by the Open Space and Recreation Plan will greatly enhance this facility with improved education and engagement opportunities, and whereas the main focus of this project is designed to construct new playground facilities for Berry residents, and whereas the project was viewed to be implemented over time by priority as fiscal resources were available with the intention of securing grant funding when and if available to assist in this effort, and whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation, restoration and renovation of parks through the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Grant Program, 301 CNR 5, and whereas the High Plains Park project will cost a total of $200,000 and the town has allocated $200,000 for this project to be funded with American Rescue Plan Act funds authorized by the select board, now therefore be it that the town administrator be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs or any other source for the purpose of designing, constructing and equipping improvements to High Plains Park and anything incidental or relative thereto, and that the town administrator be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purpose and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Conservation Commission. That High Plains Park be dedicated to park and recreation purposes under Mass General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, and that this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
There you go.
Article 19, Assessor's Recertification of Properties, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay for costs associated with the Assessor's Recertification of Properties, special appraisal expenses, cyclical reinspection and annual interim adjustments and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to conduct preliminary assessments of the property interests that would have to be acquired in order to complete the Berry Reservoir Dam Rehabilitation or Replacement Project, including costs for attorneys and appraisal fees and anything incidental or relative thereto, or anything incidental or relative, or anything incidental or relative thereto. Article 21, Department of Public Works Special Act, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the general court for special legislation to reorganize the Department of Public Works so as to abolish the Public Works Commission and to make the Superintendent of Public Works a position appointed by the town administrator by repealing Chapter 56 of the Acts of 1988 and replacing it with a new Department of Public Works Act as shown below. Provided however, that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the select board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court and authorizes the select board to approve any amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition or take any other action relative thereto. In act relative to the Department of Public Works in the town of Berry, be it enacted that by the State and House of Representatives in general court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, Chapter 56 of the Acts of 1988 is hereby repealed and the Public Works Commission established by said act is hereby abolished. Section 2, there is hereby established in the town of Berry a Department of Public Works, here and after called the Department. Said department shall be composed of the water commissioners, sewer commissioners and road commissioners or select board if a road commission is not established. Said commission shall continue to be elected in accordance with the general laws and the bylaws of said town and they shall continue to have all the powers and responsibilities vested by the general or special laws or town bylaws except with respect to the appointment of a superintendent and subordinate employees. The department shall have all the powers and duties previously vested in or exercised by any of the following departments, the highway department, the water department, sewer department and the parks and recreation department. Section 3, the department shall be supervised by a superintendent appointed by the town administrator in consultation with the select board, subject to the bylaws of the town that provide for the appointment of officers by the town administrator. The town administrator, in consultation with the select board, may establish an employment contract with the superintendent for salary, fringe benefits and other conditions of employment, including but not limited to severance pay, reimbursement for expenses incurred in the performance of the duties of office, liability insurance and conditions of discipline, termination, dismissal, reappointment, performance standards and leave. The superintendent shall hold no other elective or appointed office in town without approval from the select board and shall not be engaged in any other business that would constitute a conflict of interest as defined by Massachusetts General Laws. The superintendent shall report to the town administrator as to the doings of the department at such times as the town administrator may require. The superintendent shall exercise and perform under the direction and supervision of the town administrator all the powers, rights and duties to be exercised by the department under this act and the superintendent shall appoint such subordinate employees as may be necessary to operate the department, subject to any policies and procedures established by the town administrator. The compensation of any such subordinate employee shall be established pursuant to the personnel policies and practices, rules and regulations of the town and any applicable collective bargaining agreements. No contracts or liabilities enforced upon the effective date of this act shall be affected by the repeal of Chapter 56 of the Acts of 1988. And the Department of Public Works and the Superintendent of Public Works created in this act shall in all respects be the lawful successor of the offices and departments that were abolished to repeal by the repeal of said Chapter 56. All records, property and equipment of any office, departments or parts thereof assigned under said Chapter 56 shall, by operation of law, be assigned to the Department of Public Works and the Superintendent of Public Works. Section 6, this act shall take effect upon passage.
Do you want me to read Article 22?
Sure.
Give me a rest. Called Road Commission Bylaw Sponsors Select Board, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Berry by adding a new Article 5 to Chapter 18, Boards, Committees, Commissions, relative to the establishment of a roads commission as shown below, or take any other action, Act 2. Article 5, Road Commission, Section 18-19, Establishment, there is hereby established within the Department of Public Works a roads commission. The road commission shall be comprised of three elected members. At the first annual election occurring no less than 64 days after the effective date of this bylaw, members of the road commission shall be elected for initial terms of one year, two year and three years, where successors being elected for three years such that members of the commission are elected for staggered three-year terms. And that concludes the reading of the.
There's one more on the next page.
Oh, there is one more.
That's, it continues.
Do I have a page? I don't have a page. Okay. So, oh, powers and duties. The road commission shall have the powers and duties that are vested in the general laws, town bylaws or special acts relating to road commissions and it shall be responsible for such other matters as determined by the town administrator in consultation with the select board, provided that said other matters may include but shall not be limited to approving roadway projects, recommending the uses of road funds including Chapter 90 for approval by the select board, recommending paving bid contracts for approval by the town administrator, directing pursuits of grant funding for transportation projects, establishing transportation initiatives, establishing transportation policies including parking, regulations and traffic calming measures, approving roadway layouts, designs and materials prior to deconstruction including the repainting of pavement markings. And that concludes the reading of the warrant.
So now, John, you just need to sign.
So I think we need to, do we need to make a motion to approve the warrant?
We do.
I move to approve and post the warrant as read.
I would second the motion to approve the warrant as read and presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like a vote. I think we're moving along. I know that the budget and finance committee is about to convene their own meetings. If there are specific concerns or questions, this will be the subject of the, I think, the work of the budget and finance committee as well this evening, so comments and so forth can be presented at that time.
And we'll also have continued discussion on it at the next select board meeting where I assume we'll make further recommendations.
Okay, any other business? We have nothing on the agenda that was in favor of adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second motion goes in favor. Aye.
Although we actually have a meeting at 7. It's a joint meeting the way it's posted, so I don't know if we should adjourn.
What, what are you talking about?
Sorry, 6:30, 6:30. I know what time it is.
You scared me. I'm like, I didn't post that.
We need to adjourn and then.
We're adjourned and we're moving.
Right, we're going to move and they're all going to come up.
Yeah, but we need to go back into session because we're pressed on time.
Right, they will, they will open theirs at 6:30.
Yep.
And then, yes, you will open another.
Yep, ready to go.
Yes. Yes.
and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, in due fact, we do have two selecting here, which is important for us.
Yep.
We would like to formally open our meeting at this time.
Understood and agreed.
Thank you.
I will also take a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion second to open the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, so it is six thirty-one PM. We will open the public hearing for the Town and Barry Finance Committee to address the booklet for the FY twenty-five budget and articles at our annual town meeting. So we kind of ran this, what we'll do is we'll go through the booklet, kind of page by page, the budget piece like we did last year. We will go high level, we're not gonna go line by line, we'll go department by department. If there's any questions, you can feel free to raise your hand and I'll call on you. And if there's no questions, we'll move on to the next department as we go through the budget. And then we'll get into the articles, same thing, we'll read the articles. And if there's any discussion, public comment on the articles, we will take questions or comments on those. Is that within accordance? Is that all we got?
That's good to know.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, are you guys gonna vote your recommendations on each article or are you gonna wait till?
We've already voted several recommendations at our last meeting, so there are some passovers. Can we, are we allowed to vote during a public hearing?
You can vote your recommendations.
Okay. So, I mean, there are a few, I think, we could vote. It's, we haven't done that in the past, but.
Yeah, or we can do it, as long as.
Yeah. But if we're here, we have a form. I know Brian's not gonna make it. I don't know about that right now. But there are a few recommendations I think we should get today, ahead of town meeting, because that would be best for the public, so we'll go from there.
Can I just make a comment on the booklet to, some of them may say to be determined versus passed over.
Correct.
I just didn't want any confusion to think that we were passing over the article.
Yes.
It was, so I just, I may have changed some of them to be determined.
Understood. Would you also wanna make a note, everyone has a booklet on Article seven, I'm not sure which page number it is, but on Article seven, in the Select Board section of FY twenty-five, there was a typo. So that FY twenty-five number is not sixteen million, that should be a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. All right, I don't want anyone to get concerned there that the Select Board's got more than our annual town budget. All right, so let's get into it here. I'll read through our funds, the balances we have in each of our funds. FY twenty-three, free cash, we are negative, sixty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars. In our stabilization fund, we have eight hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Our capital stabilization, we have two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Our cable access special revenue funds, we have six hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Our ambulance receipts reserve funds, we have five hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. Water retained earnings, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars. Sewer retained earnings, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Landfill stabilization, fifteen thousand, eighty-seven dollars, ninety-two cents. In the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, there's currently six hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Any questions, comments on funds? Mr. Irving.
Six hundred and forty-four thousand is the balance of the ARPA fund?
That's the balance that has not yet been allocated, paid out. So some of the, if I'm not mistaken, right? Do you wanna take that?
Sure. So, that is right now what the town account has in there, because we do have things that have been approved by the Select Board, but they have not been paid out yet. So it is actually a little lower than that, or we have not, that the invoice is yet to pay it out. So that is what is remaining right now in the town account's budget, the six hundred and forty-four thousand.
Okay, I'm just curious, because normally like on the general ledger, you also have like an encumbered number, and then you have a balance remaining that shows that piece you haven't been invoiced yet, correct?
I believe for ARPA funding, you would do that. I know you do for other budgets.
Well, I mean, I think it's just general government standard budgeting.
For ARPA funding, do you encumber ARPA funding, because it's just like an ongoing thing?
Well, that's an accounting issue.
Yeah, so yeah, I think that's how Jeanne has told me that she has in there, so.
Did you ever come up with what is remaining that hasn't been potentially allocated or intended for a certain purpose?
So we are still in the process of all that. We are still adding all that up, but as what she has in her system, that is what it is, six hundred and forty-four thousand.
Anything else on funds? Finance Committee, have any comments?
Last week when we were in Finance Committee, it was brought up that our, we have like a hundred and something thousand. Shouldn't that be listed here?
No, because that's not a, it's not a fund, it's not, it's a part of the operating budget, it's not revolving either. So, any balance left over from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund will, with our signatures, and I believe the Select Board's signatures, will be put into the interdepartmental transfers. And that's part, I believe, part of one of the articles we have later here. So that's where those funds go. That's basically a.
Line item, it'd be a line item.
Yes, correct. Any other questions on funds? Great. All right, so, and I will probably ask somebody to read some things as we get deeper into this. Revenue, so here we have the property tax levy, and we have the columns of FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five estimated. I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna go high level. Like I said, if there's questions or comments, we can open it up. The levy total for FY twenty-three was nine million, five hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars. The levy for FY twenty-four, nine million, five hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars. And FY twenty-five estimate is ten million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents.
Is that right? These are all exactly the same two years ago?
Is there a bottom line, Ron?
We see in FY twenty-four.
Okay. All right, so the number I have, my math is correct, adding up FY twenty-four column, that number should be adjusted to nine million, eight hundred seventy-four thousand, nine seventy-seven with forty-three cents.
I'm sorry, was that thirty-three cents?
Uh, ninety-three, uh, ninety-three cents.
And that was at FY twenty-four?
Ninety-three cents?
FY twenty-four, that's correct.
Forty-three cents?
Ninety-three cents. Did I say forty-three?
You did.
I did say forty-three. I wrote down forty-three.
Okay.
But it's actually ninety-three. As long as I put it in, ninety-three, it should be ninety-three, because that's the only decimal point, is that, is that even half percent growth. So that's easy math, I can handle that. Any questions on the property tax levy? Comment? Okay, great. Steady. For state aid, our cherry sheet totals come in at FY twenty-three was one million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars. FY twenty-three, one million, two hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars. And the estimate for FY twenty-five is one million, two hundred eighty-seven, seven hundred twenty-two bucks. Questions, comments on cherry sheet totals? Local receipt revenue. Total local source revenue, FY twenty-three, one million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. FY twenty-four, one million, four hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars. Estimate for FY twenty-three, one million, six hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars. Question comments on revenue sources?
Is meals tax, can the others taxes?
That hasn't been voted to be approved, right? Is that what you're talking, the add-on tax?
We don't, the town doesn't get anything out of our meal taxes?
Not right now, not unless it gets approved at the annual town meeting. Then you can see it in there.
Okay, moving on. Additional funds. Additional funds FY twenty-three was six hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. FY twenty-four, nine hundred eight thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars. And the estimate for FY twenty-five is one million, fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Question comments on funds? Additional funds. All right. We see the moderators opening motions there. We don't really need to go into that. Through the budget, the general operating budget. I believe the Finance Committee, we did pass over making a recommendation on the budget, if I'm not mistaken, to give time to digest the budget. So I'm gonna go through line by line, not line by line, but basically the bowls. I'm gonna touch on the bowls. If anyone has any questions, comments, we can discuss. And then, when we get to the ends, we can provide a recommendation. Moderator stipend, fifty dollars. Question comment? Big money there, Joshua.
I've never found the paper where it just goes right back into your cash at the end of the year.
Select board, a hundred, so I'm going off of the town administrator recommended number. The Select Board, town administrator recommended, a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred ten dollars. Questions, comments? Finance Committee expenses, one thousand dollars. Finance Committee Reserve Funds, twenty thousand dollars. Accounting Department, one hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred ten dollars. Border assessors, a hundred fifteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars. Treasurer Collector, a hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. Legal, forty-four thousand dollars. Tax title, ten thousand dollars. Technology, eighty-four thousand dollars. Town Clerk, one hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars. Conservation Commission, two thousand dollars. Planning Board, four thousand, one hundred dollars. Zoning Board, twenty-four thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars. Town Buildings, two hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred six dollars. Central Purchasing, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred forty dollars. Police Department, one million, ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Fire Department, three hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Ambulance Services, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars. Building Department, thirty-three thousand, one hundred sixty dollars. Regional Building Program, seventy-five thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars. Mr. Irving.
The town's portion of that agreement is seventy-one thousand dollars for the commissioner?
So we do have an agreement with that, and that would be in our revenues. So that's, you look at the revenues in the beginning, you take off some of the funds from the shared services. So that helps offset our budget.
So what you're saying is you have the towns pass directly?
Exactly.
Yeah, pay.
Exactly.
On the building, yeah, on the building program, correct.
Yeah, so I count it all as revenues.
I think it's similar with the council of aging, correct?
Yes.
With Harkett.
Yes.
Emergency Management, six thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Animal Control, nineteen thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars. Dispatch, Rutland Regional Dispatch, one hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars.
What did they present as the justification for the thirty-six percent increase?
Part of that increase is the number that was put in annual town meeting last year was incorrect, that was approved. So, we had special town meeting, it was tried to be cleaned up. That's why the Finance Committee has a hundred fifteen thousand dollars in their reserve funds, because there was, there were still some CBAs that needed to be cleaned up, and the number was not fully committed from Rutland Regional Dispatch or Animal Control. So those funds at special town meeting went to the Finance Committee Reserve Funds for us to allocate at a later time. The allocation never came. So, that number, we actually paid out the dispatch, I can find the number if you give me a moment, in FY twenty-four. Unless somebody else has it, I can look it up. So the actual expense for our regional dispatch in FY twenty-four was a hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And so the increase we see here, for a hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, it's really a ten thousand dollar increase over FY twenty-four. And so the increase we see here for a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, it's really a ten thousand dollar increase over FY twenty-four. But because we had budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it looks like it's a large increase.
So this is in a payment for prior fiscal year invoice?
Right, so what he's saying is basically it was a clerical hour, should've been on the budget for a hundred and sixty-six thousand and some odd dollars, three hundred and eighty-three, twenty-seven. But unfortunately, it ended up going on this one thirty, so the reason why it looks like a big increase is because that ten thousand dollars was missed.
I do understand that, but this is a prior fiscal year thing that normally is pulled out as a separate article to address as a prior fiscal year payment. Not just lumped into the next year's budget to cover last year's payments. I mean, you have a special article for the water and sewer to do that for CBA.
So last year was already paid out, but it was paid out higher than one thirty.
Yeah, we're...
Because of the special town meeting. So that was already taken...
Because of the special town meeting?
Or that's where, you said it was allocated, right?
Well, we took the fine. We had an extra hundred...
After free cash was...
After, at special town meeting, we moved ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and forty cents from the, um, our free cash to the reserve funds. And that was because there were still questions around with the budget for FY twenty-four. I think police CBA...
We have some retros for the DPW department.
DPW CBA.
We also continue... Well, we're very close with the police wrapping that totally up. So we will have a retro issue that we'll have to discuss with you.
Yeah.
Well, my question though is, we're still in FY twenty-four.
Correct.
So you can't just take that reserve fund that hasn't disappeared yet and just pay that? Rather than roll it into next year's budget?
We are. It's gonna be paid through, right?
Right, so the one seventy-six is the FY twenty-five.
No, you're missing... I'm saying the one thirty.
Yep.
Plus the thirty-six U.O. That thirty-six should get paid out of that.
The thirty-six is paid out of FY twenty-four. It's already paid.
So in other words, what you're moving into the next year, you're saying, covers that plus the ten thousand for the annual increase?
Yeah, so we're seeing...
So, okay, I get you now. You're not making the payment for last year.
Exactly.
But you're catching up to that balance, and now you're increasing it.
Yeah, and the cost will.
My apologies, I just...
Yeah, no, yeah. It is confusing because we didn't represent the one sixty-six here. It's... This is what was approved at that town meeting, and then added debt through the reserve funds or into departmental transfers. It'll be the difference that's paid for that.
Thank you.
I'd rather ask questions.
Well, I'm trying to... That way I don't do the old bombs at the middle of the evening thing. So this saves us a lot of trouble.
All right, and that was dispatch. So we're on to tree warden. Tree warden, five thousand dollars.
Is that a stipend paid, or...?
I believe that's a stipend, yes, for the tree warden.
That's off of work done, right?
Yes.
Schools. This is both school districts as well as debt service, seven million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. So there was a question on the chillers. Is that taken into consideration? We had, the finance committee had last meeting?
That must be in their debt service.
Okay, that's part of their debt service.
Because they decided to remember that they were going to pay, I don't know, maybe three or five payments, whatever it was. So that should be in their debt number to you.
Okay.
And if it isn't, sort of, they have problems.
Understood.
Sometimes sort of their problems sort of become our problems.
Yeah, that too. Any questions on the schools? All right. Town roads and highway.
I'm sorry, the one question I did say I was gonna ask was, I know Hubbardson passed the school budget at town meeting. Any other towns?
Yeah, Hubbardson has passed it, Bo Kim has passed it, Harkic has passed it. New Braintree's due next week, and New Braintree has a point-six percent increase. They're gonna pass it.
So that makes the two-thirds of it.
That'll make it two-thirds, and so Barry will be in the fifth town this year.
And to the region equivalent's credit, they did come down after they presented. They came into us, I think we're like a higher than eight percent. And so it's brought down to five point nine percent for...
Five point zero nine.
Five point zero nine, correct. On the increase over FY twenty-four. Town roads and highway, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents.
Quick question.
Yes.
I don't want to... I don't mean to jump backwards, but I look at all the salaries going forward. We're looking at a two and a half percent increase for majority. However, to go back to the town administrator, assistant salary, assistant town accountant, we're looking at a thirty-three percent increase, a seventeen percent increase. Land use admin secretary, twenty percent increase. I know there's lengthy discussion trying to keep all the increases to a two and a half percent. Just curious as to these increases.
The portion I can speak to is part of the finance committee and presentations over the last few years. A goal has been, it's kind of like a multi-year goal, to bring the salaries of some of these departments, some of these workers, up to a comparable wage to surrounding towns. And that was, is what was presented to us. Unfortunately, we can't do it in one shot. So we started, I don't know if you recall, but last year the town approved, like, a town administrator increased their salary. We increased salary for the director of the library. And so it's been like a multi-phased approach. And we're trying to do that to prevent the town from being, hey, we need to increase our salaries from two to three hundred thousand dollars in one bump, and then we're gonna be in a situation where we have to go to like a vote for a proct two and a half override. Because we just don't have the revenue source to come in in a single year. So that's been the strategy of the town and how it's been presented to the finance committee.
Correct. I understand that argument. You know, and according to this, I guess, Tammy can be taking a ten percent decrease according to the line. You know, and as part of DPW union and whatnot, trying to get those salaries up as well. We did a lot of work trying to get, you know, the increase. But with that argument, we're seeing a twenty percent increase in one line item, seventeen percent in two other line items. So can we expect that over that couple of years, we're gonna see those numbers, say, like in some of these other departments that are only at a two and a half percent?
I could speak to that. We spent, I would say, literally dozens and dozens of months. I can't even tell you how many hours in arbitration, in, you know, a lot of really hard work. For, first, we really grappled with the DPW commission, and changed salary schedules and shifted people different steps in order to try to come into some reasonableness with that group. I think we were successful. We did vote to the retros in, I believe, in late November last year. Then, obviously, working with the police department, we continued to finalize. The police department has been without a contract, not without litigation. So we're doing arbitration, et cetera. And so we've, I think we've come to final numbers and stuff, and so we'll be looking to do a retro for them for this fiscal year that we're currently in. And there's no question, you're right when you say, we can't do it all in one year. We have the fire department next year, which will be obviously a pretty important part to us. And then we also have all of the non-union groups that we really need to look at. Tammy and I have spent a good deal of time looking at the classification system in our world. And it hasn't been really adjusted well for, because there's been too much change in the town administrator situation. And so we know that we have some issues. We've had some issues in the assessors area where we've had to make some adjustments in order to keep the right people in the right seats to collect the money. So we know that that probably sticks out in this. We know that on the eighteenth of February, of February, I wish, of June, we will be meeting with the DPW commission. And the DPW commission will be meeting en masse to look at the DPW superintendent's salary. And because that's really something that that commission has to grapple with. And, you know, ultimately, the board, you know, and then our participants in that. And so we expect that out of that omnibus budget, you'd see two and a half, but there's gonna be probably some monies in the other reserve, you know, enterprise accounts that have always been contributed to those salaries for those individuals who actually manage three different departments, so to speak. So, but anyway, we're not done. Before the town meeting, we think that the enterprise accounts will be managed a little differently. But that's what has always been done in the past. But we haven't come to a final line, you know, whether it's this percent, that percent, whatever. But we continue to work on that, and that is gonna be the focus of the meeting that we have on the eighteenth. We were hopeful to do that this week, but the DPW superintendent has been away on training. So we don't mean to do it this week. So we'll be doing that, working in executive session. We'll also be looking at the secretarial position or the, you know, administrative assistance position as well. And there will be conversations about that, and we will have firm and final numbers on that, I would say, at the end of that meeting. Hopefully, it won't be too much of a dogfight, but we'll get there.
Yeah.
And then those, we share that information with Tammy, and she'll make whatever adjustments are necessary in this, in that line item.
And with that being said, my understanding, right, my interpretation, which has been brought to light recently with other articles, is the DPW commission, you know, their task was making a recommendation. But at the end of the day, you know, that still should go through recommendations of the select board, the finance committee, and ultimately voted on and approved that town by the borders. Is that, would that be correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So that, and those salaries should be negotiated executive session. And then that final number that comes out is then divided equally amongst the three funds, the two enterprise funds plus the operating budget. Correct?
So we'll get there.
Yes.
Obviously, it's a struggle.
Okay.
It's always a struggle. So if the omnibus budget that you see tonight, if that two and a half remains in the omnibus budget, there could be obviously a two and a half in an enterprise fund and two and a half in the sewer enterprise in the dark. So we have some maneuvering room there.
Yeah.
Without messing up this rest of all the work that you people have already done.
Yeah.
And we know that people, you know, we start out here and here and hopefully get there. And so we have some work to do with the individuals involved. It's always awful when you're the person's salary that sticks out all by itself. You know what I mean? Everybody always jumps on that. And it's, you know, certainly bears true. The superintendent of schools never really did any work. They never worked many hours. And that's what happens with people like the Department of Public Works. Well, I called one day, and there was nobody in the office, and yeah, well, yeah, I heard you guys had a water break, but too bad. We expect, and so we have criticism, critiques, and, you know, that stalls some of the conversation for some people. They wanna get up and, you know, talk about that and not necessarily understand all of the other complexities of managing three different entities and doing it. And when I look back at this in time, over time, I say, okay, what happened to the Parks and Recreation Commission? Because that used to be a commission, and it used to have its own budget, and it used to hire people to mow lawns and pick flowers or whatever else they did. Then they had a cemetery commission that actually had a person or two with a pickup truck that looked like it was, you know, from Lot One. They'd say, you'll go around and do their job. And there was a tree warden who was separately, you know, appointed, and he was somebody else. Now, the Department of Public Works has all of those jobs. And so, okay, you pretty much say, okay, we've got two people who do all the mowing, all the green whacking, all and all and all. And it's a busy day, and it's very difficult to get everything done all of the time. And I think, for the most part, if you look at our grounds with two people working really hard, it's pretty amazing what they get done. So I've learned a lot after, you know, working, you know, just sort of sitting as a citizen and saying, how come they don't do this? How come this doesn't happen? But, you know, getting more involved in it, I understand it more, and I understand how the commission works.
Yep.
And it's, and people say to me, how do you like being a selectman compared to being the superintendent of schools? I say, give me my superintendent of schools any day because you had authority with responsibility. When you're selecting, you have this much authority and this much responsibility. It's very difficult to sort of make things happen quickly. So patience is the name of the game, and it's tough for people in the public to have to be patient. It's very difficult for the select board to be patient at times.
Understood. Does that answer your question? So essentially, right, the way I understand it, DPW, like, most of the folks, they are now part of the CBA.
Yes, they are.
The folks who are not part of the CBA, that process really hasn't been followed by the law of the land that the town has in place. Right? Because it's supposed to go be presented to the DPW commission. They're supposed to then approve that amount, send it over to what used to be the personnel board, which is now the select board, for their recommendation, as well as then presented to the finance committee for that recommendation. So that step of the process has not been followed, right? And so because of that, like, I know we're probably gonna be at that situation here until they have a meeting at the DPW commission to finalize any other salaries that are not part of that CBA.
And we're very aware of the fact that the increases that were negotiated for the Department of Public Works were significant. I know Tom doesn't agree with the word significant.
No, no, I fully agree that...
They were, and so now we have to fix the people managing, okay, the Department of Public Works. So I get that we have work to do, and the process, I think, is pretty clear. And so we have a meeting on the eighteenth that we'll be, you know, doing, I hope, diligence and getting this stuff moved forward.
I've said it a couple of times. I did an informational request, not formal. I asked Tammy for like the background, and she gave me a lot of history of like... I didn't get it either when I looked at it, like, how does this fit in? But I've said this in the past couple of meetings, like, in the future, when the money's a little bit better, I'd love to see a way to settle it down for all the departments, you know, the whole town, all the town employees. I look at Athol, where they have the system, job titles are put into three categories. And every third year, they're looked at again. So if you're in the second year, you're gonna wait until it comes back around to have it. And there's a score that you've knocked down, and you fill out your job duties. And sometimes you look at the sheet and you say, I deserve a raise, but the math says you don't. You know, and it's pretty fair. It's antiquated, but it does work really well for them, so.
Mr. Irvin?
I know when I was on the board, and Andrew was town administrator, he went through a thorough classification review and recommendations on resetting that. So moving forward, the two and a halves would just carry the line there. Did that ever actually get enacted? Is that what I'm missing? Because everybody talks like this has never happened. And that's only five years ago. It's not like never.
You're talking about regular colon?
No, I'm talking the complete wage scale redo, charts, ten-year, twenty-year, whatever we were doing. Every position was on that, and that was the recommendation to...
I don't know if it was.
Build off of. Moving, that was the new classification.
I think the challenge is inflationary factors that have occurred over the past few years where now... And also the raise of minimum wage, like, in the state where there's people working who are close to that minimum wage. You can go work at Dunkin' Donuts and make way more money, right? Eighteen dollars an hour. And other towns are paying out. The challenge we have is revenue and trying to pass a balanced budget, recommend a balanced budget to the town, right? Where we, Jesse's here from the border of the assessor, the assessors' office, and, you know, ninety percent of our town's revenue is off of property tax, right? You have other towns like Athol, an example, they have lots of industry and business there to help mitigate that burden on the taxpayer. So we're a little bit of a unique situation, and like, we're trying to pass a balanced budget and doing a stage approach to not impact the tax rate in terms of, hey, we're gonna need an override. I said at last meeting, I think the town, we're gonna have an override at some point, a request for an override in the next couple fiscal years. There's no way we can maintain this balance with the revenues coming in. If the town decides they want services to continue as they are, right? We have to make a decision, like, we're gonna cut services, but we have to maintain services and increase the revenue somehow. Like, if you forecast it out, the math doesn't work.
Yes, I have the classification system.
So you're aware?
Absolutely.
Okay, because the discussion sounded like people, this is not happening decades.
Yeah, the thing of it is, we're working with the unions, and so the impact of those negotiations make the classification system okay, but well, too low.
Understood.
Okay.
And that I perfectly get.
Yes.
I would just...
We do have the classification, and Tammy and I spend more time than I'd like to admit looking at it.
I look at the town employees, like, the admin assistants. In the school department, they're like the cafeteria workers. And that's hard to hear because they do all the work. They bring in all the revenue, they file all the paperwork. And, and that's hard to hear, because they do all the work. They bring in all the revenue, they file all the paperwork, they bring in all the taxes. And then, you know, their salaries, I don't think reflect, like, all the work that they do.
Thanks, Corey. That'll make it easy for me.
All right. Any other questions or comments on Tom Rosenhilde? All right, we're moving on to snow removal. Snow removal has been level funded for years, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars. Streetlights, thirty-six thousand dollars. Cemetery, sorry, no, I skipped over one. Sanitary landfill, zero dollars. Cemetery department, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars. Board of health, thirty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars. Inspector of animals, six hundred dollars. Council on agent, one hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars. Veterans agent, eighty thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars. Library, three hundred thirty thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars. Recreation, eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Parks and commons, fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. Historical commission, twelve hundred dollars. Holiday decoration, three thousand dollars. County retirement.
What, what's the increase in, sorry, what's the twenty percent increase for the holiday decoration?
It's a three-year contract.
Oh.
Every three years it goes up, so we have to.
Oh, they do the Christmas lights, so, yeah.
Lights are expensive.
Yes.
County retirement, five hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Tammy, have we gotten the, the bill yet?
For.
For FY twenty, for, what the estimate is for FY twenty-five? Because you have it exactly the same.
Uh, they, this is actually since Jake's retirement.
County retirement.
General insurance is, I've seen that was level funded. Basically, we're fine on that. That is actually.
Well, county retirement usually comes in a little later, oftentimes.
Oh, no, I think then it's up nine percent.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, the prior, the prior is five thirty-six.
I know when I told the, the finance committee about this coming, none of you were happy.
No, no, and that, well, that's.
But we can't dispute it. We have to pay it.
And that's, that's part of those inflationary factors and other, other factors that the, the town is bound to in terms of expenses that, that come up, and it's literally driving the overall annual budget up and over. These things, they look small line by line, but when you, when we get to the ends here, when you bunch it all together, it's a good amount of money. General insurance, two hundred thousand dollars. Debt principal, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars. Oh.
I think we kind of, I may not have been paying attention, but the health insurance.
Oh, yeah, good call. Appreciate that. Health insurance, five hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars.
Does that include the, the new offset that was voted in?
Yes.
Yeah, the.
That's why it's twelve percent instead of the actual, like, eight and a half, we're paying an increase.
Yeah, just curious. That takes effect July one?
Yeah, okay.
Was that the anniversary date?
I believe so. Ask Jake, is that, it takes effect July one?
It should, as far as I'm aware.
Debt principal, we had a question last meeting on the combined capital improvement ban. Be, like, it's not denoted here as debt excluded?
Jake, I'm glad you're here today. So the debt exclusion, that's what we put on the bracket, is right?
Uh, the combined capital improvement ban was debt excluded.
Okay.
So.
Are we able to, in future publications, notate that on the account with the D E?
I would assume so. Council agrees. It, it passed the process.
The second one, the Ruggles, that's the one that you applied the forty-something thousand, if you count? On the debt principal?
That's the one that's going to be going down on for the next one.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
That's the one for the way that's.
We're going to be close on that one, right?
I think.
Yeah, we're pretty close to paying that off.
I think it was a fourteen-year ban and was, took it in twelve, two thousand twelve, so we're.
We have a couple. The combined ban is actually a lot smaller when you consider how much it started out at. I think it was a million-dollar ban.
Yeah.
And we're getting down on that.
I think that's supposed to expire. It was FY twenty-six.
Very soon, yeah. We only have a couple more payments.
Matt, you have a question?
Yeah, just on the, on the front page where you identify the debt service override municipal when it's showing three ninety-three, seven thirteen. Is that, how does that relate to this in the budget, the debt service?
So, Jim, so you're calling it that one?
So that's, that I believe is addressing our debt that's debt excluded, which is above and beyond the levy limit.
Yeah, so that's additional revenue. The town approves, so pay that as like an added tax on top of their regular levy. So like, the, the common project was a debt exclusion, so that's like a surcharge tax on top of your property tax.
But it does go away once the debt is paid.
Correct. And more recently, that, that combined capital improvement plan ban, that was debt excluded, I believe, a year and a half ago?
Yes, because it wasn't originally debt excluded, but we did it after the fact, using a mechanism D O R said we could.
Correct, because that had equipment that the town was already.
Dead depreciated, already be on use.
Yeah, the ambulance was out of service, and we're still paying for it. So we're trying to kind of fast-track getting that off the books.
More specifically, I guess what I'm asking is, what numbers in debt principal and debt interest on your budget are part of that debt excluded number you're showing free levy or whatever that.
It should be anything with a D E. So the Barry Common ban, the Ruggles Lane project, the Barry Common State House, nope. And then also, it's not denoted here, but the combined capital improvement ban. So those, those four pieces are all debt excluded, voted on by the, the town and approved. And that's where those additional revenues come in on the front end. And they're applied specifically to those, uh, bands.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's where you're just saying we need to make the note.
Correct.
D, debt excluded on the common ban as well. Thank you.
And then rounded out, we have the interest on those debts, ninety thousand, three hundred one dollars, sixty-two cents. Which gives us, with the COLA, town administrator recommended budget of fourteen million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and thirteen cents. It is a big number. Close to a million-dollar increase from FY twenty-four, but as you can see, it's.
I think when you change it, it was, I think it was only six hundred and eighteen thousand. When you look at the number that was incorrect on FY twenty-four.
Oh.
So I think it's now six hundred and eighteen thousand.
Okay, six, six eighteen.
I mean, I'm not saying it's some change, but.
Yeah.
It's a little less than the number we did.
Oh, yeah, understood, yeah.
Yeah, I got what you're saying, maybe.
His first number, twenty-four, it's wrong.
The, yeah, the tax levy limit.
That's before we get any articles.
Articles will be another challenge. So at last, at last meeting, we did not make a recommendation on this budget. Technically, we own the budget, so we should probably make a recommendation on it for the voters of town.
I make a favorable motion to approve the budget. As written.
So I think we got clarification, a favorable action for the town administrator with COLA.
Yes, yeah. Can, well, I mean, we make a favorable motion, it can still be amended to town.
Well, the town, this is just for our recommendation to the town.
So to keep a balanced budget, I would make a favorable action, motion for a favorable action with the two and a half in the vote.
Okay, so we have a motion for a favorable recommendation on our town's annual budget, the one with the town administrator approved amount plus COLA. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the next page basically highlights at a high level those numbers minus, or is it minus the schools, correct?
Yes.
So this is the, the full budget that we just went through, minus the schools on that spreadsheet on the next page. Then the town has two enterprise funds, a water enterprise fund and a sewer enterprise fund. The FY twenty-four budget for water enterprise was five hundred and forty-eight thousand. Five, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go bottom, bottom line here, including, including the indirect costs. FY twenty-four was seven hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents. The twenty, the recommendation for FY twenty-five is six hundred seventy-four thousand, fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Any questions on the?
Just curious, are the, the sewer and water salaries representing the CBA?
Correct.
Okay.
Excluding any superintendent or supervisor, correct?
They're not covered by the CBA.
Correct. My understanding, that's correct. Supervisors are not?
Highway to, right, superintendent isn't in.
And the secretary?
Yes.
Are excluded from the, the CBA.
So both of these budgets are down, four point nine and seven point six.
Any questions on the water? Sewer, FY twenty-four was nine eighty-eight, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and forty-five cents. The recommendation for FY twenty-five is nine hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars. Results in negative seven point six.
What are the, do we know the reasons for the reductions?
So Maureen, I think you and I can just, we looked at the, what they spent. This is what the superintendent had given me for. The only thing I had changed was the, the two and a half percent. So this is what I received. I even brought my stuff to show that that's what I received. So that's what I put in. But I did go ahead because I wanted to do my due diligence. So I looked back and I did ask the Catlin's office for what is going on, because I was concerned myself that they were so low. And it looks like he hasn't expended his whole budget. He's not here this week, so I was not able to.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But that's.
Okay.
That's what he had put down, so.
And do we, the members that are here from the DPW commission, do we know if these, but do these budgets flow through that process?
Yeah, so I mean, they have individual sewer department meetings and an individual water department meeting. And then it's more of a joint meeting when we were, you know, actually working at DPW.
Okay.
And so they have had the opportunity to look at all of these numbers. And certainly, Mr. George is here tonight and probably would have seen, has seen these numbers.
You good with those?
Um. It's going to be just warm.
Well, you give them back. Matt?
I'm just curious with the, uh, the reduction to be two and a half percent for secretary and the superintendent, how much of that factor in the drop of a minus four, point nine percent in their budget in a minus seven point six percent in our budget?
Well, they're getting a two and a half percent increase.
But they had asked for more.
They, they did ask for more.
And so that didn't happen, so now they're actually showing a budget that is less than last year. That may not have been the case, because they were building room for that.
Possibly.
And so my question is, do we know what the difference in this budget would have been had you?
We do not, because that wasn't.
But you did. You had a department regulation recommendation, correct, at one point?
We had a, yeah, there was a department request.
That's, I'm just asking, what was that value?
Ten, it was twelve percent.
Twelve percent. They were, they were looking for a twelve percent increase for the superintendent and the secretary.
But I think based off of what Maureen said, when they go through that meetings, there may be a potential for some, a conversation to be had in both of these.
I would, I would say it's a negotiation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And I do understand that, and I understand that generally, all three different departments are a third of these two salaries.
Yeah, well, they, but they need to negotiate the salary at the DPW commission with the, currently the nine elected board members.
Correct.
And then that's supposed to be presented to the select board and, and finance committee for recommendations. Right? And then presented to the voters, to the town. I mean, the town could go in and say, there could be an amendment on the floor, right? And.
Well, there could be, and I'm not pushing this. I'm just curious if this current fiscal year budget is the only department that actually reduced from last year is the water and sewer. And I didn't know how much of that was specific to these items versus.
They are enterprise funds, so it's separate from all the operating budget of the town. Because they, these are paid for by the users of those services.
I do understand, yeah, but knowing that the CBA salaries are included and that was a bigger increase. But I was just curious how much you do know where the savings occur?
Uh, it looks like in operating.
I'd say, because we didn't have any employees.
Well, that, yeah, well, the savings here, though, in, in the sewer.
The pumping expense?
It, yeah, you can see the expenses are reduced, probably to be more in line. Is that, is that correct, at least with water? Right? Your, are you, your water sewer?
No, this is sewer.
Okay. So is that like your, your expenses have been reduced, and so you're just putting the budget in line?
We're trying to do, do due diligence to try and save what we can.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, I tell Jay my recommendations, and then he kind of puts it forward. I do know we do have some line items that we did expend all the money, which ideally, you know, we really don't want to with the enterprise fund.
Mm-hmm.
So I think maybe Matt's kind of, if Matt's, if I get what Matt's kind of hinting at, will that difference in salary versus what's been, it's not sixty thousand dollars per apartment?
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but the, the salary, the salary's an equal chunk from each, but it has to be negotiated at that high level.
Right.
Right? So once the salary's negotiated for those members that are not part of the CBA, right, that's negotiated with the, the DPW commission, as it's written today. And then that number's finalized, they would include that number across the three funds, they divide it by three. So it's not like the DPW can go in, the superintendent can go in and say, I want, you know, eight percent from water, fifteen percent from sewer, six percent.
Right, that much I understand, yes.
All right, just making sure.
Cause, um, okay.
So if I could just, so if that's going to happen on the eighteenth, if there's change, this book will be different when we get to town meeting. Right? So the, the budget article will, will change, the appropriations would have to be different. And then the enterprise fund, the same thing, right? You'd have to make the adjustments so that all three of these budgets balance.
Yes, and that, that's why I'll recommend for us to meet probably a little sooner than the meeting we have published. So we, if there are any changes, we can off, try to offer recommendations prior to the opening of the town meeting.
I think last year, the budget changed, and the moderator had to, like, read a different set of numbers, like, live, like.
That doesn't happen, does it?
Moderator doesn't read the numbers somehow.
Or, or somebody had a, like, there was an amendment made, yeah, there was an amendment made, yeah, it changed.
Did you get that meeting scheduled, forty-eight hours? And you can't count the holiday, because you use holiday hours.
You just see forty-eight hours, not weekend, holiday, right?
All right, so as we get into the articles, any other questions on the budget itself? Great. Some of these articles, for those of us that have attended town meetings, they're fairly common. I'll read at a high level, the, basically, the, what the article is, and then we can, if there's any questions on the article. Some of them are lengthy, we can, we can read it if we need to in full.
Um, I just wanna say that you'll see a few in here where you actually had, there were a few that were favorable or to be determined, but they're, they're incorrect in the book. Um, I can point them out as we get to.
Okay, yeah, I highlighted some when I was like... I brought my... All right, so Article, Article One. And this is to see if the town will vote to choose all other town officers, agents and committees not elected by ballot or appointed, or take any other action relative there too. Any questions on Article One?
I do, because I've just always had this question.
Ask away.
Since we have legal advice here, every time I read this sentence, it makes no sense. So could you explain how they're choosing all the officers that they don't appoint and don't elect? Because that's the only two methods to choose anything. Legally.
Yeah, so, this is, um, a very, you know, outdated, um, article, right? Went from way back when, right, when the annual election and the annual town meeting were one and the same thing, right? And so you'd, you'd have at the annual town meeting, you would also be electing the, the town officials. This is a whole over, I think, from that, that probably doesn't need to be here, but I suppose in theory, there could be some committee that town meeting votes to establish, like maybe like a new fire station study committee or something like that, and then that would be appropriate under this article.
Great, thank you. And it looks like the motion's gonna be passed over this article anyways. So it's just there for fun.
It's one of those articles I don't have to change.
Article Two, Reports From Committees. Uh, this is sponsored by the Finance Committee to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of, of the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee and any other department or committee and act thereon, or take any other action relative there too. And this would propose the town to accept the written reports of town departments for calendar year twenty-three. Questions on Article Two? Article Three, Payment Of Bills From A Prior Fiscal Year Sponsored By The Select Board. Four fifths vote required, is that correct? That's, I usually see two-thirds on, on these articles.
Which, which one were you on?
Article Three.
Yeah, so, in order to pay a bill from a prior fiscal year, it's a four fifths vote at the annual or a nine tenths at a special.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay for bills of a prior fiscal year or take any action relative there too, and this is being moved to pass over... Are there no bills?
We don't have, we have no prior fiscal year.
Okay, great, no bills. Uh, so we, we voted favorable, like, on that, I believe, right?
Passed over.
We passed over it? Do we wanna make a recommendation, because this is gonna be passed over at town meeting, right? That's a proposed motion, so we could just leave it as is, right?
So right now it's to be determined.
Oh, okay.
So you just wanna say like?
No recommendation.
No rec, yeah, no recommendation.
I make a motion to make no recommendation.
We have a motion, we have a motion for no recommendation on Article Three. We have a motion and a second for no recommendation on Article Three, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer any available source of funds, sums of money to be added to departmental budgets and appropriations for the fiscal year ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, or take any other action relative there too. This looks like it's also a passover. Uh, any, any budget, any FY twenty-four budget transfers we address through interdepartmental transfers by the Select Board Finance Committee at the end of the year.
We did make a favorable motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think we knew, we discussed that there wasn't gonna be...
So what happens is, this is, I was actually talking to the legal team right before the meeting, and, um, it's something that's an old, it's one of those old things that used to be on here. Right now, it's gonna be like how we did our snow and ice ago to you, or if we do a line item transfer and go to the Select Board, or the reserve account would go to both, so we are going to have some of those, but we don't have to do it at the annual town meeting.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, and that's probably just also, annual town meeting's very late, right? So like, if you had held an annual town meeting earlier, then town meeting would have to vote those transfers.
Yeah, sometimes you have them like in March, right, April, yeah.
That's kind of my figure of overall picture. One is, this is the first time I recall seeing it on a warrant.
I think it was, I think it's been...
Because we always did it, like you said, at Select Board meetings. We knew that's what we did, we never put it on the warrant, because it was not a warrant thing. So I was kind of confused why it was on the warrant prior to printing it and then voting it earlier and signing it, just to say we're not gonna do it.
I, I think it's been there for a while, right, where it's usually part of that...
I think it's been there.
In the past, we've had articles on it to vote for previous fiscal year. It's been a separate article, um, so if there was a past bill from a previous year, it would go on.
That's Article Three.
It would go on.
Article Four is different.
That's, that's the...
Article Four is cleaning up this fiscal year's budget.
Yeah, budget transfers.
Oh, yes.
And normally, that's where like, looking at your budget, you start to see certain departments overrunning. That's what the special town meetings for is, to address that, fund it, so they don't go into deficit.
Yeah, well, that's...
And if they are going into deficit, you tell them to stop. You don't just let them go into deficit, because it's illegal. And I'm just curious that, just because we wait till May and June and say, oh, we'll just clean it up, well, that doesn't make sense to me.
So I, I, can I, I wanna speak, can I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so he's absolutely right, you're not supposed to deficit spend. I will tell you that going forward, I'm hoping that with the budget, which I know it has increased, will help us not have to deficit spend anymore, because you're not supposed to.
Do you know which departments did it this time?
I, I, I can just tell you, look at Regional Dispatch, and we had to pay that in that invoice. So I think there's just a lot of things that just need to be cleared up going forward, because things that, you know, past practice obviously was not the best practice. So with that being said, you are a hundred percent correct about cannot deficit spend except for stone ice, and hopefully going further in the future, it will not happen, because normally you do the line item transfers. May first is when you can do those, so line item transfers would be done May first, and then obviously you declare your books, and that's how that would end up going. So it's something that we have to obviously progress in the future.
So this is really strictly just dispatch?
Well, it's not, it's not just dispatch.
I'm not saying, just given that it's an...
No, I was just asking, do you have the list of the departments that have...
You buy all means, please come by my office and I can show you the budget if you would like to look at the budget before by any means.
Yeah, we, like, on all of our, our meeting minutes, you should have, um, or available, maybe not all of them, because, on a few of them, we can send it to you as well as the, um, the, the budget, the expenditures, um, because that is...
The one that gets printed every two weeks when they're doing voices?
One hundred percent, yeah, so you, we see that in Select Board, probably automated in an email. That still comes out, it's public information, it's there, there are town, there are, like, if you look at the bottom line, there are a few departments that are overrun, and it's inflationary factors, like this building is overrun. You know, because they, it was a little bit under budgeted, trying to trim the expenses, and then all of a sudden, oh, it just...
And that is anticipated by the state, that's why the Modernization Act of two thousand sixteen allows us to do the line to line transfers, why they got rid of some of the arcane rules, like you used to only be able to do payroll money to payroll money, so if you had a problem, it had to be... They've eliminated a lot of that, they created a formalized system under state law that begins, I think, May first, and runs through end of fiscal year, and Finance Committee and Select Board both have to sign off on those, departments have to apply for them. The TA and the accountant do check to try to help departments if they're unaware, but generally speaking, that's how it's addressed. We have had some inflationary issues the last couple of years, occasionally, and this is why the state allows this process, you know, we're off by interest on a debt payment by six dollars. So we need to address that, we fix it next year, but how are we gonna deal with that six dollars? We still have to spend it. So we look to the line item transfer to see if we can cover that six dollars, so that we're not deficit spending any more than that. But the state has a whole process now enshrined in law that we have to follow for the line to line transfers.
But the whole intent is, you're not in deficit until May first, and then you transfer it and then you make your payment.
There are many circumstances that can...
That's what that law's about.
There are many circumstances that can cause a department to end up in deficit prior to that point. Usually the town can juggle it until the time when the transfers can be done. It's something that the accountant's office watches. If she starts to see a department deficit spending, she's gonna be contacting them. If they're getting close to their budget, if their percentage is very high, like eighty percent in January, we know there's a problem. So the accountant is contacting those departments and letting them know, you've got an issue, your wage line's at eighty percent, it shouldn't be, what is going on? How are you gonna offset this? How are you gonna prevent this from going over? That's a routine thing, I, every town accountant I've worked with, that's what they do. Gene is the same way. I know of at least one department where that exactly happened in February, they got the email of, you know, you guys are eighty percent, you shouldn't be on wages. And so then the department had had to accommodate that, so...
And that was my point, because on the Select Board, every two weeks when you review the warrants, I did the same thing, and if I saw anything close to eighty, I would bring it to the town administrator's attention and say, what are you doing?
Which is the role of the position.
Not, not trying to beat them up, it's just like, how do you propose to address this, just more like, I'm not trying to be like, you can't do this. It's just, what is the plan? You know, when you see that coming and you're not in deficit, because that is sometimes why having your special town meeting in October, November is not beneficial. Because that's your opportunity to do it legally, prior to May first.
Special town meeting, that case needs a revenue source, and when we've had these negative free cash years, there's really no place to take it.
But we, we haven't. But we did it in October and November, that's when we passed the town administrator's file on.
Correct.
We did have it, yes, we did have a special town meeting.
And then there, and then some of that, some of those funds from free cash are transferred to capital stabilization, OPEB, the reserve fund for the Finance Committee.
No, I agree.
Is that the new year?
But I'm just suggesting it might have to happen then, or could it have happened later? So we could have a chance to address the things you're starting to see come December, January.
And just to note...
That's all I mean.
And just to note on that, though, if departments are aware they're gonna run a deficit, they can always come to this committee and ask for funds out of the reserve fund.
Yeah, and that's the point of the reserve fund.
The town administrator's probably gonna have to be encouraging them to do that when this happens.
Yes.
We've been trying to actually increase the reserve fund with, like, where we can. When I started with this committee, I think the reserve fund was maybe five thousand dollars, and now it's up to, we have it up to twenty thousand. Because that does help if there are issues, like, it's really for emergencies or something unexpected, right? Like, you, uh, each department should be planning their budget accordingly. But if something comes up, eh, you know, the, the photocopier that costs five thousand dollars bursts into flames and is not covered under warranty or something like that, like, wow, we only had five hundred dollars budgeted for this photocopier, they can come present to the Finance Committee and we can take a portion of those reserve funds with the approval of the committee to, to finance that project.
And so that's more what I'm talking about, is we have the method to address these things.
There is a method, there is a method.
It's just apparently we weren't using it this year.
We did use, yeah, well, not this year, we have used it in the past. Chief Saborn came, came to us and we had, he had a partially funded position through a grant, and he was asking, he asked the Finance Committee for reserve funds to fund the additional portion of that, and it was approved by the Finance Committee, because that was an unexpected expense. And the grant came up last minute, halfway through the cycle. So we, we have gone through the process, it's just, it's, it's not common right now, and it hasn't been common. When I joined this committee, if Brian's not here today, but, uh, that process wasn't followed at all. Like, no one, they were just there, they never really used the finance.
We didn't even have it until end of year.
Yeah.
And created it in the budget for that purpose.
All right, we are gonna move on.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the thought.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're on to Article Five. Uh, because Article Four, we already had that, Article Five, so Article Five is the Water Enterprise Budget. We have read the numbers for the budget prior to, and this article is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer a sum of money for the operations and maintenance of the municipal water system for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, or take any other actions relative there too. And we did not make a recommendation on this. The Select Board made no recommendation. Was there, can I ask if there was a reason for no recommendation?
We did not have a lot of information and data at that time, and just decided to pass over. We did, I would say, a cursory review of these articles and made a recommendation on some, but passed over the many.
Okay.
Based on these, they might be adjusted. You guys are gonna have meetings with the DPW and the Water and Sewer Commission. Do you think it's smart that we pass over these and wait till...
Yeah, we've already passed over, so we can, we can hold on this until, um, our meeting ahead of town.
I, I believe to the Select Board, one would actually be a TBD, no, no recommendations?
Yeah, that's what I, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep. I make a motion to pass over Article Five.
For the Finance Committee recommendation?
Yeah, and Six, until, uh, we can get back together with the Select Board.
All right, well, before we get there, is there any other, other questions, comments on water? Okay, all right, so we have a motion to, for the Finance Committee to not offer a recommendation, pass over a recommendation for Article Five. Is there a second? There's a second, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Could I make a, a suggestion instead of pass over?
Sure.
Can we say defer?
Defer, absolutely.
Because when I read prior drafts, I thought you were saying like pass over the article.
Understood, understood, I like that, yeah, absolutely.
So I make a motion to defer, uh, Article Five until it's time that we learn more information.
All right, so Finance Committee's recommendation, it's a motion to defer our recommendation on Article Five. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Six. This is for the Sewer Enterprise Budget, sponsored by the DPW Commission, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer a sum of money for the operations and maintenance of a municipal sewer system for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, or take any other action relative there too. Again, these numbers should, uh, coincide with what we previously discussed. Any questions on the sewer? And for our recommendation?
Uh, I make a recommendation that we defer. Thank you. Uh, until the Select Board can get back to us and we can talk about, about future meetings again.
Great, so we have a motion to defer our recommendation for Article Six. We have a motion and a second to defer Article Six recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Seven, so this is pretty much what we've already discussed. This is the omnibus budget. Exclu, it includes everything excluding schools. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to pay town charges and expenses for the fiscal year beginning on July first, twenty twenty-four, and to vote a fixed salary and compensation of all elected officials of the town in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-Eight, effective July first, twenty twenty-four, and make all appropriations for the same, or take any other action relative there too.
Water and sewer is not, is that correct?
No, they're, because they're enterprise funds, so those are those articles that we just, uh, deferred. This is, this is the budget that we just walked through, excluding the schools, because the schools will be the next argument.
But there is a DPW superintendent in here somewhere.
Correct.
That might change.
Yeah, that number could change. And if, we could, we could vote a recommendation, right? And if that number changes, we could re-vote a recommendation, correct? Or we could defer until two weeks from now. Is there any recommendation from council on that?
That's really your preference, okay.
I, I make a recommendation considering we approve the, or the, the general budget.
Yes.
So I make a recommendation that we give a favorable rating on the, on the budget.
So we have a, was, there was no other questions on this, right, very discussed, we'll say, okay, great. Uh, we have a motion for a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee for Article Seven. We have a motion and a second for favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Eight, Omnibus Budget Schools. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to pay school charges and expenses for the fiscal year beginning on July first, twenty twenty-four, and make all appropriations for the same, or take any other action relative there too. This is the full amount for all... This is the full amount for all schools of seven million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars. And we were favorable on this already. Any questions on the article for the schools? Article Nine, PEG access and cable-related funds. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one hundred ten thousand dollars from PEG access and cable-related fund to operate the public education and governmental PEG access and cable-related fund established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and Three Quarters for fiscal year 2025, and further to appropriate a portion of said funds to complete the Matrix broadband project and to install equipment on the third floor of the Henry Woods Building to record public meetings and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto. So my understanding, we had our last meeting, this is to outfit the third floor in the Matrix broadband project.
Spring Hill Road.
Spring Hill Road.
Which was going on going for two and a half years.
Okay. That's been completed, right? So this is just paying for the?
No.
It hasn't been completed. Okay.
I believe we're very close to, you know, having active cable access to the folks on Spring Hill Road.
Okay.
But it has been a very long, because we are spinning off from Matrix, who is servicing the town of Petersham.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it was, it's, it has been going, going for a little bit now.
Do we have advice from council that we can spend PEG access money on that? I'm a little surprised that we can spend our PEG money on that.
On the equipment or the broadband or both?
Yeah, the equipment's absolutely no problem, because that's PEG. That's where it's going. That makes sense. The broadband project, that, um, sounds a little bit like we're raiding the piggy bank. I'm just curious. Um, do we have advice of council that that's an appropriate use of that money?
I know this came up two times, Jessica, or it came up with Jessica, because you guys got a price of three hundred and seven thousand to roll out internet and cable to the remaining eighty-five or whatever residents.
They're now at up to, almost a million.
Yeah, so I know they passed it through legal then, because they were going to do it then.
No, because when they did that then, they went to town meeting and asked for the money.
Yeah.
It wasn't passed through legal.
No, I'm saying, they weren't, they weren't getting it from PEG.
So this is the first time I've ever heard of PEG money being used to provide local broadband to individual residents.
That doesn't sound to me like what PEG is for, so I'm just a little curious.
We can ask our little council to investigate that further.
Yeah, this is the, the first I'm hearing that, that issue, but yeah, I'll definitely look into that.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
And I, I believe, was the Matrix in there? Did we accidentally like look over that, um, when we discussed this as favorable last week or?
Yeah, it was all.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe I didn't have a good understanding. We, we did motion for favorable as the finance committee, but now that there's a legal concern?
Infer.
Well, yeah, we'll see what council says and then maybe we'll, we'll, uh, we discuss this ahead of town meeting.
So you want to defer that one?
Uh, do we want to change our recommendation to a deference?
Uh, I make the motion, we change our recommendation to a deference.
So in light of new questions regarding Article Eight and the Matrix broadband, we have a motion to change our recommendation to a deference on Article Eight. Do we have, we have, we have a motion and a second to defer? I'm sorry, Article Nine. I apologize, on Article Nine. Uh, they're all blending into each other right now. Um, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Article Ten, revolving funds. To see if the town will vote to establish spending limits for the town's revolving accounts established pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, and the town's bylaws, Chapter Forty-eight, Section One, for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2024, or take any other action relative thereto. And the spending limits have not changed. These have been fairly static.
The only one that changed was border health limit of four thousand, the inspections and best practice. That would be the only, there was nothing added on, no, no, no other ones were added to the revolving fund accounts.
Okay. Yeah, we did give a favorable motion, but I did, because, uh, we asked last week for, uh, some of the balances for those funds and we received those balances. I can share those if anyone would like to know the balances. We have, uh, the library revolving fund currently has eight hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. The board of health currently has fifty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. The electrical inspector currently has twenty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
That was twenty-six, three eighty-three?
Yeah, fifty-eight, correct, with fifty-eight cents. As long as my notes are written correctly, so we'll make a, you know, a little asterix on that. Uh, plumber inspector has a balance of two thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Gas inspector did not have a balance. The police department, uh, civilian firearm safety class fees did not have, um, a balance. And do you, do you, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Joe Brown.
Joe Brown, uh, Officer Brown, uh, or is it sergeant?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Brown.
It's okay.
All right.
It's okay.
Yeah. Is that, is that because right now is the police department offering civilian?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time, okay. Do they, is there a plan for them to offer?
It's a potential with the, because we have one of the officers that's newly firearm instructor. So we'll see in the future.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, the police department, the Barry Falls Dam contractual, contractual revenue, that has seventy-five thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and five cents. What's that?
That, that seems a bit high, uh, to me, see, because every, every five years, the amount of money or so should replace the chief's cruiser.
Mm-hmm.
The chief just took possession of that cruiser, I believe, um, excuse me one moment. August of last, of twenty-three. So the majority of those funds, I believe, should have been expended, um, with that cruiser.
Okay, that's a, it's a good call out. Because that was going to be a question that I had is, um. Yeah, 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 exactly. Uh, so I think we'll get with the town accountant?
We get on average like a thousand dollars a month from, from their labor managers, so.
Yeah, this, this came in, let's see. This, this was the balance as of six, twelve, twenty-four. So unless the invoice for that cruiser, because it came in this fiscal year.
Yes.
All right, so unless that invoice hasn't posted.
Right.
Uh, so that could be.
Sure.
That could be the reason why. So.
Just pointing out.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is that why it's in the FY twenty-five spending limit? Because if it doesn't get paid this fiscal year, you can pay it next fiscal year of the seventy thousand? Because if you just got a new one two years ago, you're not buying a new one this year.
No, no, this is just a general, like, this says that they, these revolving accounts, regardless of the balance, they cannot exceed spending that value in a single fiscal year. Not that they're.
Right, and I'm just asking why you're even letting them spend any dollars this year?
Oh, they don't have to. It's, it's kind of, that funds is, is like a revolving funds.
No, you, if this gets approved, you're allowing them to. So why are you allowing them the seventy thousand limit in your budget recommendation?
The town would allow them, the voters of the town.
I understand.
You are presenting the budget and you are recommending something to the town to do. I'm just curious if this is just to cover that invoice in case it doesn't come in by the end of June? Or is this because, well, if they got the money, they can go buy another cruiser? Because by authorizing them seventy thousand to spend in FY twenty-five, they can go do it and they don't need you to approve that.
This is the admin cruiser.
Yeah, I know, like.
He can buy another one. I mean, this is the authorization you're providing is what I meant.
He has to have the money. This is a limit revolving funds carry forward each year. If the money's not expended, it goes forward. If it is expended, it doesn't go forward unless the funds are replenished in some fashion. So the seventy thousand is just the limit of what he can have in that account. Yes, yeah. I believe I understood the lieutenant correctly.
What he can spend in the account not having an account.
That account does accrue funds back into it, doesn't it? Over time, yes, that's why it's revolving.
So it just keeps growing, growing.
So it can never go beyond the seventy is what the finance committee is saying.
That would be spent more than seventy out of the balance. But the balance equals five hundred thousand.
But it's going to continue to grow as every month, as.
No, 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 you're missing my point. The thing is, is the reason we're authorizing them to spend that limit this coming fiscal year, because that's what it says at the end there. The header is FY twenty-five spending limit. Is because you may not have paid for that cruiser yet?
Correct.
Thank you. Otherwise, you're giving them authorization to go buy another if there's room in the balance.
Sure.
And that was my question. Thank you.
Is that correct, your understanding as well?
Yes, so if there's money in the account, they can spend up to the limit for the purpose.
Without further appropriation.
Without further appropriation, correct. So if there's, um, if within the seventy thousand, they can pay off the cruiser that they're currently purchasing and then buy another one, yes, they could do that.
If the current way is, if they ordered one this year, they wouldn't get it this year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's true.
Right.
But that's why there's a question on.
But you can't order one without the authorization to start with.
Yeah, well, that was a question, because there, there is an article requesting a, a new cruiser. And that was a question I had on the balance. And Lieutenant Brown was able to clarify. So we'll clarify that with the town accountant, with, uh, Gene, right? And make sure that we have that invoice, is it, for those balances to clear out that cruiser?
I can't imagine we took possession of it before.
Because he's had it since the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, that account didn't, that was lower last year. I think it was like seventy-three or seventy-four thousand, if I recall correctly. All right. The police department, detail administrative fees and cruiser, that account has a balance of fifteen thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. And again, some of those funds could go, be, be allocated already, right? Um, part of that discussion, because they're designated for the cost of an administrative cruiser.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that balance again?
Uh, fifteen thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. And the fire department has a balance of ten thousand, five hundred, I can't read my own writing. I believe it's a seven. Ten thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Yes, for administrative costs, instructor pay, expenses related.
That's the one to be used on the purchase of replacement brush fire force equipment. So.
It's supposed to only be maxed out at three thousand.
Yeah, this says fire burning.
They haven't been even spending the three thousand, so it keeps going up.
Unless they had a lot of permits this year. I think they're like ten bucks a piece, so that would be a lot, a lot of fires.
Twenty-five and fifty for agricultural.
Oh, twenty-five and fifty? But that's, that account's probably, do you, do you have a good idea if that's been just kind of revolving over?
Uh, we use it to usually, uh, match our volunteer fire acronyms. Use the purchase, uh, brush fire equipment that we get every year.
Okay.
I like to apply for, not, but I can't get a fire gun. None of which.
Okay, and they recommend, I mean, there is, the town, the department could request to increase that fund, but they did not by the spending, so I think that's static for last year. And council on aging did not have a balance, uh, either, off the information I received. Uh, finance committee was favorable on this article. Any other questions related to Article Eleven? Select board is also favorable, is that correct? All right, we're moving on to Article Eleven, the Chapter Ninety grant. To see if the town will vote to accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislator and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division under the so-called Chapter Ninety Highway Assistance Program to be expended for the maintenance, repair, and construction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under the direction of the select board. More work on roads located on the state aid primary system as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, and further to authorize the treasurer collector with the approval of the select board to borrow money from time to time during fiscal year 2025 up to the reimbursable amount for the period from July first, 2024, through June thirtieth, 2025, in anticipation of reimbursement of said highway assistance in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Six, Section Six-A, tongue twister there, or take any other action relative thereto. This is basically allows the town to spend money for Chapter Ninety and then apply for reimbursement at, um, during the year. Any questions on this article? It's fairly common. I believe the finance committee was favorable, that's correct. We were favorable, select board was also favorable, that's correct. Any questions on Article Eleven? Article Twelve. So Article Twelve is a, a new article. It's, uh, something that's not part of the regular operating budget. And this is to see if the town will vote to accept, this is a local options mail tax, Article Twelve. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Sixty-four L, Section Two, so as impose a local sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town by a vendor at a rate of point seven-five percent of the gross receipts of the vendor from the sale of restaurant meals, or take any other action relative thereto. The finance committee was favorable on this action. Question?
Have you, uh, developed any estimated, uh, revenue? How much you believe the town will make on that? And what is the basis of that estimate?
Tammy went through and did a lot of research for us. This is just Worcester County. I'll give you the copy that I have if you want that. Uh, it shows you all the other towns and what they bring in annually from it, which is, when you leave Barry to go deep somewhere, you're ninety percent paying this tax. You've got a different town.
A town of similar size and demographics, what Paxton has is passed, I believe. What does Paxton bring in for?
Uh, Paxton. Twenty-three thousand a year.
Twenty-three thousand. They have a couple, they have a couple. We have, we have like three more pizza shops than them, you know? Stone Cow, yeah, and there's a couple restaurants.
They've got it.
Oh, sorry, no, that's, that is, uh, no, I apologize. I think these are four, I think, right? That's not a year.
I don't know what now.
So that's only too much, we still have another quarter left. Okay, you're welcome.
So what is a revenue source that the town could tap into? And it doesn't affect the, the burden's not on the residents, the taxpayer, the burden is on the consumer?
There is a burden put on the local business owners.
Uh, paperwork.
Paperwork, accounting, potential equipment upgrade, so you can identify separate inventories and what does and doesn't get taxed. Because not all sales in a restaurant are meals related. Like, if you go to Stone Cow and you buy a four pack of beer and walk out the door and go home, or you buy the sweatshirt and the hat, that's still six point two-five percent, but it's not meals taxed. So they now need to separate their inventory system so when they pay it, it's now separate in their accounting of the accounts received for that.
Mm-hmm.
That is an upfront change to what they're doing. They're going to have to figure out what that means to them.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's going to apply to all of our restaurant places. And the only place that isn't a small one is pretty much Dunkin' Donuts. When it comes to that corporate support, I remember you talking about it at your last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, Dunkin' Donuts, oh, yeah, they're already doing it.
Yeah.
But that's my point is.
I mean, they have a pretty advanced SOP.
Yeah, I think.
Well, they do.
Yeah.
But now go to Barry Pizza or Red Tomato, or if you know, some of them are still working off of like old ones, like dot Matrix type displays on their registers, that it's not doing the computer work for them.
They're paying taxes to the Commonwealth every year.
Yeah, six point two-five, but that doesn't mean the bottle of Coke you pull out of the cooler is meals taxed, because it's not.
Correct.
They have to open it and pour it in a cup before it becomes meals taxed. They have to open it and pour it in a cup before it becomes meals tax.
Yeah, but they also wouldn't be paying the state sales tax on it. So because that's considered food. I looked this up because I was curious. I was wondering about wholesale market.
Yeah.
Like because they, and it's super complicated. It's, if it's hot, then it's a meal. So if you get a rotisserie chicken down there, that's a meal. If you get a, one of those little meals they have where it's like some potatoes and some meat and some carrots, that's a meal, even though it's cold. But if it was just a sandwich and it was cold, not a meal. That's food, and food isn't taxed. So it's, but as near as I can tell, this is just applying that 0.75 in all the same places that the state would apply the 6.25.
But not every business has it. Like I said, if you go to Stone Cow, they sell hats and T-shirts. That's still sales tax.
Yeah, but they already have to be dealing with different products being taxed differently because alcohol is taxed completely differently than all of these other things. So they've got to already be, or if you go into the, in there and you buy a bottle of water, that's, that's food. If they buy it from the store up there, then it's, it's not taxed because it's food. If you buy it in the restaurant part, it's, it's, it's a meal. And so it is taxed. It's terribly complicated, but they must already be dealing with it.
And the Supreme Court would back that up because that was the very argument being used by many people across this country, their Etsy businesses and such, as to why they didn't need to collect sales tax. And while the Supreme Court said 30 or 40 years ago that that was a great argument, today, recent times, they've said, no, the software has come lightning directions. You can now get software to do all this complicated stuff relatively affordably and certainly not for the courts that think it's fair.
There's probably a couple of restaurants in town that are still on paper, you know, and, but they're going to pay taxes for the Commonwealth anyway. So it's just going to be one more column of calculation.
If you look at the, I mean, Barry's is in the minority of towns that are not collecting this. And when we talk about forecasting revenue versus expense and trying to maintain services for the town, this can help alleviate the burden on the taxpayer, the property taxpayer, by bringing in additional revenue.
Coverson doesn't do it. And they have a greater potential for like certain commercial enterprises than we do. They don't really use it because of-
This is a meals tax. We're not talking about industrial, it's a meals tax on prepared food.
I'm just talking about when you look at your local towns. You have Rutland, but they're the one town that doesn't really match demographically to all our other neighboring towns.
Paxton's probably the closest to us. And we actually have a few more restaurants in Paxton. In terms of volume-
Right, but Paxton also is closer to Worcester. And it's just, they live in different-
They don't have any big industry-
But the point I'm trying to say is Hardwick.
Hardwick does it.
Hardwick does it.
Yeah, and they make like 10 or 11,000. If we make 23,000?
It was 19 grand for a quarter.
That's one quarter.
No.
It's three quarters.
So it's a total. That far right is the total to date.
I apologize.
So we still have three more months that they have to still do more.
But I'm just saying, even if you make 23,000, and I appreciate your thoughts, it's like throwing a pebble in the lake compared to your 14 million dollar budget. I just don't quite understand why you think that's not a burden that is justified with that pebble.
If any of those business owners are residents of the town, they can show up to the meeting and speak on behalf of it.
Right, but nobody reached out to the business community of Barry to even ask this question leading up to this. At least that's what came up last week when people asked, did you talk to any of the businesses? We represent those businesses, but we didn't go out and ask them? We're just going to pop at a town meeting and hope you show up? I'm just bringing it up because we're getting back to similarly how certain things have developed over the last year, where we talk about communications aren't great. Maybe, just maybe, sit on this and actually do your public outreach, get good input, and then move forward with it. Rather than just put it on town floor and just push it through because nobody knows what you're talking about. And they're like, oh, we'll make more money.
What sort of math?
My recommendation, that's my thought.
I appreciate your comments. This public hearing's been published for like 30 to 20 days, right? It's posted at all the legal places for the town.
Restaurants aren't closed yet. They're working right now.
It's on like, I mean, the public has plenty of opportunity to come and present.
The last Select Board meeting, or two Select Board meetings ago, and our last-
We can't, I mean, I appreciate-
I love that excuse. Everybody uses it. Oh, we published the meeting, they don't show up.
You show up to town meeting, no one, any attendances, relatively anywhere.
Well, I show up because I recognize these things and I try to bring up points that I think as representatives of the town, we're not doing due diligence before we throw something in front of them because we say, oh, it was on the agenda, you should have known. That's not how our world works when you go for bylaw changes. I mean, if you want to talk about finance and budget, I get that.
We're not there yet. All right, jumping gun. Well, this is a bylaw.
So that's what I'm talking about. This is, again, when was the public hearing just on the bylaw, not on the warrant? Was there one? No? So there was no effort to speak just about this bylaws at the time?
This is not a bylaw. This is adoption of a Massachusetts general law, is it not?
Yeah, it is an adoption of a general law.
64L, Section 2, it's Chapter 64L, Section 2. So any other local option, it's not a bylaw.
You're adopting a law that wasn't in place prior.
A local option that was-
I'm just, you can, you're right, you can mention where you're managing- The laws of the town.
All right, Matt, we're going to move on. You made your comments.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just, thank you.
It's, it does have favorable action from the Finance Committee. And the Select Board, no recommendation, or is it you guys defer?
We have not done-
Yeah, there's, there shouldn't be, there are no no recommendations. All of them are to be determined.
Okay. We're all to listen to you.
We'll be going through those on Monday again.
Article 13, Purchase a New Cruiser for a Police Department. "To see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of 79,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund, a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new cruiser for the police department, or take any other action relative thereto." And this would be funded through the Capital Stabilization Fund if approved, which that fund does have a balance of 250,481.86.
This one was not a mistake. I see that favorable last time we met. It had so long-
Yes, we, the Finance Committee was favorable on this. Any questions or comments on the Article 13?
Jake? As your treasurer, I strongly, strongly recommend you do though, think about replacing the funds at a future date when you have the ability. It's very important that our stabilization for a variety of reasons, including DOR, that it be a certain percentage of our overall budget. We don't want to spend it down without having a commitment to replace it.
This is from the capital stabilization though, which is separate from the town stabilization.
With any stabilization, we need to have a commitment that, you know, at least an idea that we're going to put the funds back. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, understood. Any other questions or comments?
If, if it is determined that there's $75,000 in this fund and a new vehicle was purchased, and that's the balance after it, could it be paid out of that? Or like a portion of it now?
No, because I think it's administrative cruiser.
Something different.
I really don't think the funds are there.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, if they are there, they need to be allocated.
Can we buy them a new one and get this?
No, because that fund over the years, it was not, it was not that amount. Like, I'm just trying to rack my brain here. Prior meetings where we had the revolving balance, and I remember like one year, like 60,000. So it's gone up gradually, but it's not, not to Lieutenant Brown's point, not, you know, 70,000.
It shouldn't be anywhere near that.
Do you, do you know off the top of your head the amount that the admin cruiser, the cost was total? I forget.
I can't think of it.
It was, it was close to 70, it was like 70, 70,000. And the Select Board was also favorable on that, is that correct? Okay. Article 14, Ruggles Lane School Improvement Project. And this is to see if the town will vote to transfer the unused portion of the appropriation made pursuant to Article 15 from the November 26, 2012 special town meeting for the Ruggles Lane School Improvement Project to the principal portion of the debt exclusion payment for that project due in FY 2025, or take any other action relative thereto. And the amount of the funds would be 39,064.2. We did discuss this. Finance Committee was favorable, Select Board favorable, correct? Any questions on Article 14?
Better explaining, it sounds like was already appropriated for this, and then you're asking to spend it?
It, it didn't get used. This was the one from 2014 where it didn't get used. It's been sitting in an account, and Tammy going through everything, found the money sitting in the account. Meanwhile, we're paying interest on a loan that this money was originally from. So we're going to apply that towards the principal to reduce the-
My confusion is it wasn't already approved for that purpose?
So we actually reached out, so I'm not sure if it was approved or not for that purpose, but we reached out to DLS, the account. The account reached out, did her due diligence, made sure she even has it in a report saying that they recommend that we do appropriate the entire amount, all the portion for 39,000 to pay down the principal. So it was something that we did go out with stuff, something that was just hanging there. And I don't know why it was never spent, I wasn't here. But with that being said, this is something that will help our principal bring it down like as a town account reached out, and we can do it.
All right, thank you. There's been a lot of cleanup of old stuff over the past few years. And Tammy's been great at continuing that here. And, you know, we will see, or we did see some, you know, issues like with our negative free cash and appropriation for the funds to pay the, actually, I think that comes up next. So I'm getting a little ahead of myself. All right, so any other questions on Article 14? Article 15, Overlay and Surplus Use. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Board of Assessors overlay surplus accounts, a sum of money to pay for the deficits in the following grant accounts, or take any other action relative thereto." There's the CARES Act Grant, a Sidewalk Improvement Grant, Economic Development Grant, Open Space Recreation Grant. Those amounts, oh, here they are. Those amounts total 212,699.59. And it breaks down with the CARES Act Grant needing has a deficit of 151,534.59. The Sidewalk Improvement Grant has a deficit of 41,156. Economic Development Grant has a deficit of 10,000. And the Open Space Recreation Grant has a deficit of 10,000. And Tammy, can you just walk everyone here through this article and the reasons behind it?
Sure, I'll start from the beginning of, you know, again, I've been working very close to the town accountant. So between her and I, talking about all this stuff and bringing it up, we came across this. And she had relayed to me that we did have an abundance in our payment and exemption in the Board of Assessors account. And we went ahead, I wrote a memo to the Board of Assessors, the Select Board did, on behalf of them, asking them to release these funds to pay off these deficit amounts that were in the CARES Act, one of the three ones that you just mentioned.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, economic, and open space. Thankfully, the Board of Assessors agreed to it. Again, this is their sole account. They don't have to give it to us, not even on any of the town meetings, they don't have to. But they did agree to us to let us have these funds to clear up our deficits. And with that being said, it'll give us a fresh start, and this can help us go forward. Otherwise, we'd probably continue to keep hitting deficit. I also reached out with the town accountant, and she even gave me some of the grants. I know, I don't know if you guys wanted to know what the reimbursements for the grants were, but we did actually find the grants. And again, they just were never submitted, so we never got the reimbursements.
Okay, I know there was, last week there was a question on the sidewalk improvement. Was that part of that feasibility piece?
So the sidewalk grant, I'll read it to you. I can't tell you exactly like 100% what it was for, but it says FY 2020, housing choice funds will be used for engineering and design to complete street standards, including sidewalk and bike lanes in accordance with the attached scope of services work plan and budget. So I would say to me, that would probably be the piece we'll be studying. That was actually a $100,000 grant. So we must have used some of those funds. We never ever reimbursed for the other, it was like 41,000 on that one, so.
And, and so when, like these grants here, so a lot of them are before my time. The CARES Act, that was from 2020 as well?
So that was right before the ARPA funds. And that had come out, that was like one of the first things that came out with the pandemic. And with that one, they would go ahead and they, they would allot the towns, correct if I'm wrong, allot the towns so much money. And then we would have to reimburse it from the state, say what we used the funds for, and then we'd get them back. I don't believe that ever obviously was done, which hence why we're 151,000 deficit in that account.
And that was from 2020, very proper.
I would say 2020, 2021, when that came out.
And that Economic Development Grant, do you have a deal?
Yeah, I have the Economic Development Grant. I'll read you what it says. It was a $10,000 grant. And to the town of Barry for the cost associated with developing an economic development strategic plan. So that's what that one was for.
Neil, is there a date on that, a chance?
Oh, wow, this goes back all the way to Andrew, 26, 2018. So that was a long time ago. This one, oh, actually, this one has your name, Matt. This was the Open Space Recreation, Matt signed it, 62, 2020. And this was for preparation of the Open Space Recreation Plan for the town of Barry. So again, that was for 10,000 again, and I forgot.
2020?
Yeah. I mean, well, that's what-
Good open space plan from it, which is good.
Yeah, that's more of the entire-
And that open space plan we're actually referencing now in our hard screen. It is something that is beneficial to the town. Unfortunately, the way the reimbursement didn't happen properly, so we-
Now, is there, so is there a way or a process the town is developing? Because we obviously had attrition at the Town Administrator Department. And I think some of the dates correlate to those changes, right? Is there something we can do as a town to prevent that from happening?
As a town administrator, obviously, we're very close with the accountant's office. It's very important that we have a, you know, we work really close together along with the treasurer. We have meetings with the assessor as well. We have our finance meetings every month. We go over things like this, we talk about all these issues. And I'm also the one that all the contracts have to come to. And a lot of times Jean wasn't getting the contracts, so she now gets the contracts. So I will be also be in charge of making sure that reimbursements get there. During our finance meetings, those things will be brought up. And so that's what we have in place right now. So going forward, we should not be getting deficits.
And not that I would want to, but say like two years go by, and you're like, I'm going to go find a meeting. Right, I'm not saying, I would not like for that to happen, just so you know, okay? But something, you move on. How does the town protect itself, right? Move like from having these loose ends from being followed up?
Again, I think it takes a lot of, it's the town administrator's seat. You have to make sure that, I guess it's the Select Board's duty to make sure that I'm doing my duty, making sure that I'm keeping up with all these grants.
Counsel, you, do you have any recommendations? Is there like any good best practice out there that you see?
Yeah, this is more of an accounting issue. But yeah, you know, you want to make sure that your, you know, that your documentation is kept in a way that it can be found by someone who comes later.
I would say that Tammy has probably not only unearthed some very interesting and, you know, challenging things, but she's not made a lot of friends sometimes because she's had to go in and say, wait a minute, how did this happen? Why did this happen? And then, you know, get together and say with her team, how do we fix it? And that's the process I think that she's been really working very hard and tirelessly on. But again, when that happens, some people say, we don't have to do that. We never had to do that before. How come you're always focusing on finance? And when this board made the recommendation to hire Tammy, we told you, we're getting a CFO. Okay, we're getting a CFO. And that's not going to be a change in pace for all, for all of us. And I think, you know, a year from now, things will be, there'll be less of this stuff. But, you know, we've got to clean up what, you know, we inherit because as Matt would say, and you would say, we've had a lot of transition. And it's really hard when the selectmen are not full-time operators, you know? We work and so forth. And when you get the interim people in, they're really good at putting their finger in the deck, in the dyke, I mean, but they're not like going back in time and looking at the CARES Grant and looking at what she's looking at. And so we hired what we thought we needed, and she's doing her job.
Understood. I thank you for the in-depth explanation. Is there any other comment or questions on Article 14? And the Finance Committee did provide favorable recommendations. Same from the Select Board, correct? Article 16, DPW Water Sewer Union Contract. "To see, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from water in sewer enterprise funds retained earnings accounts, a sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first year cost items of the collective-" the first-year cost items, first-year cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and Teamsters Union Local One Seventy, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is asking the town move to appropriate a sum of twenty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars from the water and sewer enterprise funds retained earnings accounts as follows for the purpose of funding and implementing the first-year cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Teamsters Union Local One Seventy. Sewer earnings would be an amount of eighteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and water retained earnings would be an amount of seven-thousand, twenty dollars and fifty cents. Finance committee was favorable, select board was favorable. Any questions on Article sixteen? Article seventeen, this is from the Board of Assessors, compensation for part-time assessor. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to appoint one of its members to a paid part-time position under their supervision as allowed by general law, chapter twenty, chapter two-sixty-eight A, section twenty-one A, to fix the compensation of such appointee, and to raise and to appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund such position or take any other action relative thereto. At our last meeting, we did discuss with Jesse, he provided an in-depth analysis. This does give them the ability to hire a part-time assessor through the Board of Assessors, is that correct?
Yes.
And but it's, we passed this article before at town meeting?
We have. Now would be inappropriate time, but there is a potential issue with some of the language of the motion that is raised.
Okay.
Just to...
Absolutely. Walk us through, please.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so the way that the motion is phrased, it makes it seem as though the money to pay for this position is going to be coming out of the omnibus budget, and that is not the case. This funding does not and has never come out of omnibus. This comes out of funds that were allocated through specific articles that were approved at previous town meetings that we have in separate accounts specifically for this and other purposes relating to recertification, cyclical expenses, and all the other things that we need to pay for. So this would be coming out of not the omnibus budget for FY twenty-five. This would be coming out of funds that were approved at a meeting last year and the year before and the year before that. So I just want, so I might have to amend the motion.
No, because the motion hasn't been made yet. So what'll happen is that town council, this was up in the air because we didn't understand where the money was coming from because it didn't say.
Yes.
And so there was some back and forth, and I think what we now understand is there's no money attached to this. We just need to do this to fix the compensation, so the motion won't mention anything about that. It's perfectly fine for a motion to not mention something that was in the board article.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I got nervous when I saw that because I wanted to make sure there wasn't misinformation. Yeah, so really, there's no, this, this won't bear any need to raise and appropriate per se because it'll be paid out of accounts that were raised with this expense in mind in past articles, if that makes sense.
Yeah, understood. And any questions on Article seventeen? The finance committee was previously favorable, select board is favorable?
Just, I believe we did a TBD on that, just because we had not planned to really do all of our recommendations the other night with Parker Dusko. We'd be doing that on Monday night.
Okay. Matt, you have a question?
Am I correct that this relates Article nineteen?
I'm sorry?
Does this relate to Article nineteen?
Indirectly, so...
It's a new article that does the same funding as the prior ones that you're funding it from?
Right, so Article nineteen is an example of the articles that were approved in past town meetings that would pay for this sort of thing, among the other expenses that the assessor's office has to pay for. We've used almost exactly the same language to ask for money to be raised and appropriate for this and other reasons, and these would be put into that fund that this pays off.
It's the only reason I bring up.
Yeah.
And the assessor's office does have a couple of years of funds, and when we get to that article, if you choose, we could have Jesse elaborate on the funding.
No, that was just to raise the example up to answer the questions of Article seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further questions on seventeen? Article eighteen. Article eighteen is a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for the Communities Program for improvements to High Plains We did discuss this last week, so general synopsis.
Sure. So the general synopsis on this one is that we need approval at town meeting to use, we're actually putting forward ARPA funds to use as a match for this grant. So we're putting forward two-hundred-thousand in ARPA funds in the hopes of receiving a grant for a hundred-thousand dollars to further that project. Even though those are ARPA funds and they're not, you know, subject to town meeting for being spent, we do still need this approval to apply for this grant. This just approves the town applying for this grant using those funds, and it allows us to accept the grant if we are awarded it.
Yeah, it doesn't guarantee the town receives a hundred-thousand-dollar grant, but it authorizes the select board and the town administrator to apply for, correct?
Yes, and it is a fairly competitive grant, so, and I do understand other towns are also putting ARPA funds up to match it, so we're, but we're optimistic that will have a good shot at it.
Our park is old.
What's that?
Our park is old.
Yes.
I hope we got it.
I hope we get it, you know, I know, there's a lot of kids up here on that. It would be a great improvement to the community. The finance committee did not, I think we were waiting for further clarification on this, which...
Actually, I think it was favorable.
It was favorable.
It was, my bad.
Favorable, so we were favorable on that, and select board's TBDs still on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on Article eighteen? Article nineteen, the assessor's recertification of properties. And this is, we'll see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds, a sum of money to pay for costs associated with the assessor's recertification of properties, special appraisal expenses, cyclical reinspection, and annual interim adjustments, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is the article Jesse, you alluded to. The town's kind of voted on this in prior town meetings. Do you just want to walk everyone through this?
Yeah, sure. So there's a number of mandates that we have to adhere to to comply with the Department of Revenue. And of those, these are kind of covering the big four. So recertification is something that we do every five years. We're in a recertification year right now, and basically what it equates to is we have to present and analyze a lot more data than we usually do year-to-year for the Department of Revenue to certify us and give us a tax rate. So every five years, we've always had to hire out a third party to assist us in that, and that can sometimes be very expensive. So that recertification goes into a fund that is specifically to pay for those expenses. Cyclical is kind of a similar thing. Cyclical inspection is something where we have to visit every property at least once within every ten years. And occasionally, because of the staff that we have and the sheer volume of properties relative thereto, we also sometimes have to hire outside help. This is usually what we'd be hiring the board member in Article seventeen for, to assist us with data collection, to make sure that we're visiting all the properties and complying with that statute. Special appraisals would cover expenses such as, there's a law that now requires us to hire an expert to value the five oh four utility companies, like Mass Electric or New England Power in Barry, and that has cost us about a thousand dollars in past years, but that price might go up, so we try to budget a little bit ahead of that. And then interim value adjustments refers to the adjustments that we, that we have to make every year between the five-year research period, where we always have had to pay a vendor, usually the same company that gives us our valuation software, to assist us in making sure all of our values fall within what the Department of Revenue says they have to. So basically, it's raising the total to pay for four different types of expenses, all in order to comply with what the Department of Revenue needs us to do.
And a portion of that money, is that set aside into the account, let's say, a lot of people filed abatements? Is a portion of that money funding that?
So that's separate. That is, that comes out of overlay, which is set, which is a separate account budgeted for when we set the tax rate at the end of the year. And how much we can put into that depends on how close we are to the level of that. So that's kind of a separate thing.
So this year, if everybody filed an abate, then that money, that particular money, like here, I know, I know last week it was mentioned, I think you guys had like seventy-three thousand or something in the, like...
It was a hundred-and-eighty thousand, I think.
No, 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 this fund...
The seventy-three thousand refers to the total funds raised by articles like Article nineteen.
Previous articles.
So those are specifically to pay for research, cyclical, special inspections, or special assessments and interim adjustments. Those can't pay for overlay. Overlay, we have, I don't remember the exact amount, I want to say it's about a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-eighty thousand. And that, that fund is specifically allocated only for paying for abatements or errors that happen, exemptions as well.
To clarify that though, Jesse, real quick, that hundred-and-eighty thousand, that's assuming that the article here is going to be passed, right, taking the two-hundred-thousand funds out of there?
No, it's a separate fund. So this is an appropriation of...
No, no, I apologize. The Article fifteen...
So overlay surplus.
Because the overlay surplus...
So as far as I know, the board has already authorized the release of those funds specifically for the purpose of paying for the...
Yeah, so that, that one eighty you just referenced, that's already taking that into consideration, so the town's last approved, taking those funds.
Right, that hundred-and-eighty, give or take, is after that two-hundred-and-twelve has been removed.
Okay, I apologize for confusing the articles. Thank you, Jesse, on that. And I do, I think the big question for the finance committee is last time there wasn't, there was no raise or appropriate in the wording? So now that we know that it's going to be a raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer, that, just walk us through again, like that process, right? So we don't really have the funds in the omnibus to cover this. We don't have the free cash. That would then go through and be incorporated into raising and add to the taxes.
This is raising and appropriation, so it goes on, so at the end, in November, they do the tax rate recap, which Jesse does, and the town accountant does, and the town clerk does, and they fill out that. So that's how you land again your taxes, how they go through all this, and what has been approved and what hasn't been approved.
Okay. Any questions on Article nineteen, comments? We are, we deferred or passed over?
I, I mean, it makes sense to me, you know, I don't want to make a motion that nobody's going to support, but ninety-three percent of our town's revenue comes from his department. I hate to like not give him the money that he legally needs to continue their revenue. So that's where I'm at. I would make a motion to, for favorable action.
All right, so we have a motion for a favorable recommendation from finance committee on Article nineteen.
Sir?
We have a motion and a second for favorable action on Article nineteen. All in favor? Article twenty, we kept it on, huh? The Article twenty, the Barry Reservoir Dam. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to conduct preliminary assessment of the property interests that would have to be acquired in order to complete the Barry Reservoir Dam rehabilitation or replacement project, including costs for attorneys and appraisal fees and anything incidental or related thereto, or anything incidental or related thereto. I think I just read the sentence.
Yeah, I think that was just a...
All right. And this is to move to raise and appropriate fifteen-thousand dollars to conduct this assessment. So I just want clarification. We, Barry has a reservoir, and then this is, this is like referred to as the old reservoir, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's...
So is there, is there any way the public could confuse the two?
Meaning with Barry Falls Dam?
Nope.
With the, with these, there's two old reservoirs in some people's mind. The one on Pleasant Street is not the old reservoir. That's just a defunct reservoir. The old reservoir, okay, or whatever, was, I don't think it was a water supply for the community. It is located in a different part of the, you know, community, and the state has got a program that says they will foot the bill to sort of make adjustments, you know, either just, you know, remove the dam, fix the spillway in a different way, and make it so that it would be an attractive or possible place for people to use. But there is no public way to it, and so the town would have to see if there's a local community member who would say, I'm in, I will provide a right-of-way for a fee or no fee or whatever, because without that right-of-way, it's pointless for us to spend money fixing it up so it could be used as a recreational facility.
I learned that gentleman did show up at a meeting, bought that property, and did say that.
Yeah. Saying it, saying it and doing it is a different thing, but I know...
This would, and this would cover the legal fees. There, even someone giving us a property for it, there'd still be legal costs that this would be able to cover.
The thing, the thing that I've had conversations very recently with Tammy, and she's going to ask the select, the select board to review this again.
Yes.
Just because of where we are with, you know, where we are with the budget. And so while we are, I believe that we should really attend to this, we may not be able to favorably recommend it if we look at the numbers, and this is a part of money we might need somewhere else. The, this budget is very tight. We are tight, tight, tight to revenues.
I would say we may, you know, have a motion to pass it, sorry.
Oh, I...
Yeah, at town meeting.
We need to actually discuss that at the select...
Yeah, understood.
Can you just clarify the wording, what raise and appropriate means to the budget? Is it a, just becomes a debt service? Is that what it is? Or is it...
We, that, I think we just answered that one.
Flows down to the tax rate. Raise and appropriate flows down to the tax rate.
Yeah.
That didn't answer my question because I don't know what that means. So when you say it flows down to the tax rate, it's like your budget plus this, and then you include that to do all your taxes, okay?
And then if it's over two and a half percent, the town has to make a decision, do you want to override? So by raise and appropriating, we don't have the free cash to cover this, and we had, this was a discussion the finance committee had. My, like, our recommendation, or my opinion was to try to hold this to a special after, to see if we have certified free cash, because we're in a negative free cash situation right now. So that was my opinion on, on this particular one. There are, I, I think you were as well, a few of those meetings for the dam where the state came in, they did their presentation.
They're coming back again to do whatever and updates on the old, the old...
Was that a, was that a public hearing or is that just a meeting with the state?
There was just a meeting with the state, that the Commonwealth was just here to present...
It was a public...
Yeah, I think you're right. I think we did a public hearing, no second meeting, but they were here primarily to say, this is a grant, you people have been chosen for this dam rehab or whatever. And then there was a lot of public controversy and communication about it, about, you know, maybe we shouldn't just, you know, destroy it. Maybe we should figure out a way to have the community benefit from it. And so they're coming out again to talk with us because they, there's been no money appropriated in this grant program that we would be part of yet, so I don't, I don't know, you know, what status they are, but we have to do some labor before we could say what we've recommended to.
Right. Right now, the only thing we can tell them to go ahead with is to remove it completely because anything above that, they're going to require us to take possession of the dam itself, and we can't do that without having access to it.
And then to understand, we'll have an annual or a semi-annual, depending on what they would recommend to a maintenance program that we would have to...
Yeah, there'd be ongoing costs associated with it if it were not fully breached.
Yeah, and I didn't mention this at last meeting too, because growing up, we grew up, I grew up on a private lake. So all the abutters that were on that lake, they paid an extra tax specific to the maintenance of the lake and the dam on that lake, right? Like, I'm not sure, since the town doesn't have any property, to me, something similar to that makes sense if the abutters want to keep the dam.
Yeah, I, I think what would have to happen then, and I do, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but we would essentially have to take possession of it, and then they would have to create essentially a trust... And then they would have to create essentially a trust that would purchase it from the town, and that they'd be responsible for it, maintenance for it. I, I think that would work, but I haven't checked that with people, so.
Sounds complicated, right?
Well, yeah. And they'd put some liability on the town before it's all finalized, and that's, that's a risk.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not, there's, there's really no non-risky option other than removing it. So, but the option to save it is there if the town wants to put money towards it every year for those I know of.
In our, our last meeting, there was a dispute that the dam was already partially breached many years ago.
I believe that's the case. If you go there and you look at it, you say, well, this is already, you know, the spillway is way down. It's not, the depth of the water isn't what, I mean, the state made us believe. They made it like there's going to be a head wall of water, you know, as Henry was building, heading down Allen's Foundry and that way. And I, it was breached by Allen, Allen's Foundry Group. They got together because they couldn't find who owned it, and they went up there and breached it to a point where it's, you know, it's, it's pretty manageable. But the people who have purchased land around there, I mean, this is nice recreation for them, and whatever. And then you have the, I think, East Quavon Land Trust owns one of the banks of the West Early side, I think. And then there's conversation that there's another sort of area like, you know, Mount, I forget her name, it was Mount something.
Mount Grace?
Mount Grace, that they were interested in also thinking of going up there and, you know, getting the land. But I don't know who they buy it from, because nobody knows.
Right. So, so the town would have to take possession of it, essentially for unpaid taxes. And then we would become the owners of it. I think part of the reason this is coming up is that the state now, through the Department of Dam Safety, is requiring dams now, for the first time, to have, to, to be registered. So we actually have a dam that we own in town. We had to register that this year. So, you know, as, that's the same way you'd regi-, not register, but title a property. So they're now requiring that for dams. So they're essentially taking these dams that have no owners and trying to make owners for them and saying, if you want this dam to stay, you're responsible for, you know, the liability. If it fails, you know, the, the maintenance of it, otherwise we're getting rid of it.
As a, there, is there a possibility that the state has incorrect information of, like, a pre-breach?
I think, I think so, because when they described what they believed was the circumstances, we went, really? Okay. So when we walked up there and we said, well, that's not it at all. And then we talked with people who were affiliated with Allen's Foundry at that time, and they said, no, 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 we went up there. You know, I was one of the guys who did it. And we went up there and dumped the spillway so there wouldn't be a huge head wall if, if the dam failed. So I, I'm with you.
At the end of the day, there, if, there's something there that's holding back water, and the state wants to get rid of it. And it's not as dramatic and dire as they made it seem, but there is, you know, they, they would like to breach whatever's there, or they want us to take responsibility for it.
If I'm not going to say, if, if the town doesn't own the property, they can't do anything with it anyways.
I, I don't know. The Department of Dam Safety might have some, some way to do that. I, I don't know.
Historically, if they don't find the owner, they say the town has the responsibility. They're the same on the dam up at, what is it, Gogan Road or whatever, that the IMS has that property with the water, but the dam is, again, nobody owns it, but it became the town's responsibility from the state's perspective.
But not, not as, not as big a deal as, as what.
No, but it was still, if we can't find the owner, we're just going to say it's the town.
And they could, and really, they've done a real diligent search as far as trying to find any owners. And it was owned by some small group, trust or group of people who've long died. There's no relatives. They've done deed searches, and so it's either going to be us, or we're going to breach it, and it's still be us, I guess.
What happens if the town doesn't? If this goes to floor, whether now or later, when funding is available, and the town says, no, we're not going to appropriate these funds? What, what, like, what is the risk?
If, if the town isn't appropriating the funds, I, I think really, as the select board, our hands are tied. We, we need to tell the state, we're not taking responsibility for the stand. And they're going to tell us, well, then in that case, we're breaching. If, if we won't take responsibility for it, they won't say that.
You think the state's going to go right up there and breach that?
I don't.
I wonder how they're going to get to it.
Well, they can try.
So realistically, what I'm assuming from the state.
How different is that than the way we would do it?
So what they would do, though, they would get temporary access permits for it, and they would, essentially, they'd have to pay for temporary easements, which are significantly cheaper than permanent easements. And as the town, we would need a permanent easement for ongoing maintenance for it. So it's a, it's a big, big financial difference between a temporary easement. And they could take that, you know, by force if they wanted to. There'd be some payout for it, but it would still be significantly cheaper than having to actually purchase a permanent easement if no one's willing to donate one to us.
And that, it is an, like, if the town takes ownership, not having any town property up there, it's an expense to all the taxpayers that benefits a limited few abutters at the end.
Which, I mean, you know, there, it's really why, you know, to, to me at least, seems more appropriate to take up a town meeting than to just say, okay, here's ARPA funds to do the study. You know, to see, does the town even want to engage in this process to begin with?
How does it fit or not fit into the approved open space in our creation plan? Or have we reviewed that to figure out that piece?
Well, I figure there's no good, in my opinion, there's no town property, so it, it wouldn't fit.
No, it totally fits, because that also includes acquisition of property that creates open space and protected space.
I'll, I can check if there's an.
It's just a bigger thing. It's just a plan on how you want to.
Yeah, a hundred percent, I agree.
At the end of the day, we still, you know, need a majority.
I don't disagree with that. It was just, big picture. It's another piece to consider, that's all.
I mean, yeah, it would be, it would be great, you know, recreation opportunity that could potentially draw people. Economic development wise, there's a great opportunity there, but, you know, or at least a potential for an opportunity there.
But without, without really good access for the public.
I think a motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer Finance Committee recommendation on Article twenty.
Yeah.
Our motion and second is to defer favorable action. All in favor? Aye. Article twenty-one, Department of Public Works Special Act. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation to reorganize the Department of Public Works so as to abolish the Public Works Commission and make the Superintendent of Public Works a position appointed by the Town Administrator, repealing Chapter fifty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-eight and replacing it with a new Department of Public Works Act, as shown below. Provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court and authorizing the Select Board to approve any amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition or take any other action over there too. So this, we had a great debate on this at our last Finance Committee meeting. And this essentially is looking to, right now, the DPW is a commission of three different entities, right? It's the Water Commission, Sewer Commission, and the Select Board.
The, the DPW Commission is, yes. The DPW Department's actually separate departments.
Okay, so, like, we're looking to abolish the commission.
Right, right. The department would remain intact.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just, just in, the current commission members have not had the opportunity to go through this with any detail with, with John and et cetera. So that is happening on the eighteenth as well. And I did have a conversation with the Chair of the Sewer Commission, the Chair of the Water Commission, urging good attendance and so forth, so that we could make sure that there was an open, you know, conversation about this. The Select Board has not made a recommendation on this at this point in time, so that's deferred. And if we obviously are, I mean, John is, I, I, you certainly are a huge proponent of this, and I turn the floor to him. I would tell you that I'm not a huge proponent of this at this particular time, without a lot more study and interaction with the people who were elected to serve as the Water Commissioners and served as the Sewer Commissioners, and by the same people, in the same process, that we ended up in our seats. So I'm very concerned to ensure that there is open discussion, and this may be just the first, you know, iteration of a discussion. I don't know. I don't know, I don't know if this is ready for town meeting. That will be something that you, you will discuss, we will discuss. And if it gets to town meeting this, this time, it'll be interesting to see what happens.
It is on the warrant that was signed earlier. So it is being posted.
Well, it could be, it could be passed over, whatever.
Yeah. I mean, at the same time, on that same note, I think the people who show up will know if they're ready to vote on it or not, and make that determination for themselves. You know, and, and honestly, if people come to it and they don't understand what it is, and that's, that's on me, I didn't have this out sooner. It has been discussed at DPW Commission. It'll be on the agenda for two of the four meetings that have happened at that point. It'll be discussed at three of the four meetings that have happened this year.
When we say it was discussed at that meeting, it wasn't on the agenda. It was briefly argued, and I, I watched.
Well, it was not the May, March meeting, not the May meeting. It was on the agenda in the March meeting. It was brought up in the May meeting without being on the agenda, and it is on the agenda for the next one. So I'm, I'm happy to go into what it is, though, you know, and.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you walk us through, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of words. I know you, I know you sent over some amendments that were made. Now those amendments are official, correct?
Yes, they are.
With part of the warrant that was signed earlier this evening. So, being a proponent, and this is the Select Board sponsored, so yeah, please, Rob, because walk us through.
Yeah, so essentially, in my opinion, and Maureen may disagree with this, the DPW Commission, the way it stands, is fundamentally flawed. There's a reason they're not widely used. There's a reason towns are getting rid of them. In the last ten years, no town has opted to create one, or eight, you know, almost nine percent of towns have established how they're creating their Department of Public Works, and none of them are using this. The fundamental flaw there is that with every department, it's the department head's job to determine and focus on what's best for their department. And then the town administrator's job to say, okay, now is this best for the town? When the department, the DPW department head reports to the DPW Commission instead of the town administrator, the DPW Commission is also saying, what's best for the DPW? They don't have that broad perspective of what's best for the town. And that's where the fundamental flaw comes into this, where it's not necessarily what's best for the town, even though maybe best for the department. You know, there's, there's some examples of that, you know, just with snow and ice. There wasn't sufficient oversight at one point in January, where snowplows were put onto other trunks, with the assumption that those could be used out of the snow and ice account. If that had gone through the town administrator, we would have been able to say, hey, no, that is illegal. Thankfully, we had ARPA funds, but next year, we don't have ARPA funds. We don't have that backup, and we need proper financial oversight of every department, not almost every department. And that's, that's the, the core of what this does. Aside from that, it also allows for a road commission, which is the next article. But essentially, it sets up the DPW to have the same accountability, same structure as it reports to the town administrator, that the fire department have, the police department have. It also gives additional responsibility to the DPW, sorry, the Commissioner to make hires and appointments the same way the police and the fire department do, without needing a commission to approve those for open decisions. So it, it kind of breaks up a little bit of what the commission was doing, gives some of that to the town administrator, some of that to the Commissioner. And then, of course, the Select Board works with the town administrator to make sure that everything is working in the best interest of the town as a whole. So to be clear, like, specifically what it does, it would change the high-level structure of the DPW to function in a manner similar to the police and fire departments. It would abolish the DPW Commission and transfer those responsibilities to DPW Superintendent and the town administrator. It would allow the town to establish a contract with the DPW Superintendent. Currently, that's not legal.
I don't believe that's accurate. I, I've heard you say that a couple times.
Okay.
Well, if you finish, I will open it up for.
Okay. It would provide the option for a road commission to be established. It would update, update the language in the Department of Works Special Act. What it would not do is it would not change the employment status of anyone in the DPW. It would not change the functions of the Water Commission, and it would not change the functions of the super commission.
I think if you look at the current language that actually is part of the amendment, or you could say, that allows for the DPW Commission to exist. The current commission does not follow those regulations. In other words, there are things that they could do or should do, and they haven't been doing. And they have, so I think we need to look at that. And my only concern is, I, I don't want this to appear. And I'm not saying some of John's ideas aren't wonderful, they are. But in deference to those people who are elected, who have spent their, a lot of years, participating in this particular, you know, function as commissioners, I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure that they understand this is not an attempt of big power grab from the Select Board. In other words, that, oh, you, in any way disparages their, their, their work. Because when you put this together, and you're pretty much, Tammy and the selectmen are in charge of everything, it's just let you guys stay on as commissioners. To do what? To do what?
Well, they would still, they would still be sewer and water commissioners, overseeing the enterprise funds for each of those, expenses related to those. Which, you know, that's where it gets into, for example, snow and ice funds wouldn't be under a DPW Commission anymore. They would be done in a way that, you know, the town administrator can say, no, that's not a legal way to use those funds. Which, you know, was an issue with a dump truck as well, that was attempted to be purchased by the DPW Commission, I want to say, twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two, shortly before I joined. And.
And we made a law.
And it had to come out of ARPA, because it couldn't come out of snow and ice. And then the exact same situation came up again, two years later. But two years later, work was done without approval from Tammy, from anyone who could approve that. And it was done with the intention of using snow and ice, which was not legal to use for it, and we had to use ARPA. Thankfully, we had ARPA. But if we didn't have that, we're, you know, where are we funding that? So we need that proper financial wherewithal. And I, I do just want to say, I have absolute, like, I have a lot of respect for everyone on the commissions. I think there's great work they're doing. I, you know, we're not touching the Sewer Commission and the Water Commission, you know, but it's, it's not personal. This is, I, I believe it's my job to come in and look for what the town, you know, where are their big picture challenges, what can be better for the town? I believe, long term, this is a better structure for the DPW Department, for the town. And I think everyone in the DPW, and I think the town as a whole would benefit from this.
Before, before we jump in for the, because we did discuss this last week, I want to open it up to, yeah, your hand raised. Tom, right?
I got a lot that has gone through my head over this. Number one, I'm going to address this one right away. John, you mentioned that this is not anything personal. The way this came out, the way this is written, it, it certainly seems, it certainly seems personal. And a lot of the things that are being said are being directed towards the DPW Superintendent. This is rewriting his whole position, his whole job. A lot of the stuff that is actually written in the roads commission, that roads, this roads commission would recommend this, they would advise on that to the Select Board. DPW Superintendent, that's his job already. He's supposed to do that. Another, another comment was, is advising what's best for the town. We've got three select persons on that board. Their job as select persons is what's in the best interest for the town. That's why they're a part of that commission. Not a, not roads commission. They're the select people. They're the overseers. They, they know what's going on with finance and everything else. That's part of their job. The whole thing is to bring all three of these departments together to collaborate for the best interests of the town and, and operate the DPW to enhance the town. The way this is rolled out, there's no communication within the DPW whatsoever. This came out briefly at a meeting, it was undegenerate, it was brought out. I don't think anybody thought it was ever going to grab any, any wheels and go. It came out at the, the last DPW meeting, and there was extensive talk on it, and it was starting to get heated. There's been no public meeting, no public hearing. There's been no vote at DPW Commission. A lot of the public don't know this is even up here. So this is rolled out completely wrong. And, and as Maureen has said, she doesn't want it to look like that the Board of Selectmen are, it's a power grab. But to a certain degree, it does look that way to certain individuals. I understand, it probably isn't, but it looks that way, it has that look.
Understood, I appreciate the comments. Jake?
One last, just one last.
Go ahead.
The biggest thing that we, I talked about in the last meeting, and John just said it. If things aren't being done the way it's supposed to be done at that meeting, and it's been done wrong, then the place to bring it up is in that meeting. Rather than changing bylaws and going before town meetings and everything else, start at the meeting. Start with those three boards, those nine people that are in place to make the adjustments. Let's fix it there. Rather than trying to, you know, ultimately, if this gets changed, now we've got three water, three sewer, three roads, and in addition to three selectmen that are governing Department of Public Works. We've got, that's going to be 12 boxes over a department that right now, we've got what, seven?
Thank you, I'm gonna, thank you, Tom, for your comments. Jake?
I just wanted to know that this isn't a bylaw, it's special legislation. Berry's setup is actually unique to Berry. Very few towns have a setup like this. The situation that you're calling problematic is actually how most towns are operating. Usually, you have the roads commission, a water commission, and a sewer commission, each oversee their divisions of the DPW itself. And as the bylaw, or I should say, mail to legislation, special legislation request is saying, is that those bodies would still have all the same authorities they have under law, which they have now. Your sewer commission still has authority over your sewer division as a commission. They hold separate meetings to make decisions as such. Water commission the same. Most towns actually prefer the structure that John has put forward and don't have a unified DPW commission. So you have three elected bodies that would oversee it. And the roads commissions, I'll tell you right now, have superintendents who report to them. So I find it odd to say that the superintendent does the same thing the commission does, because I've worked in many towns where the superintendent exists, same kind of position, works for three departments and answers to each board. It's not a problem, he just reports to the three different boards at their meetings. So I don't see how it's unusual, if anything, what's being proposed would bring Berry into line with the rest of the state.
Thank you, Jake. Matt?
In my opinion, the counter to that, rather than going through the state and this whole process where it's written that the Select Board, once it gets started, can do all their own amendments without any further input from water, sewer? Because that's how it's written, the Select Board works with the state moving forward? That is how it's written.
So, the, what that is saying is that if the state comes back to us saying we want to make these changes, the state's not allowed to make significant changes without our approval. But it's not saying that the town and the state would be working together to make changes to it. If the state initiates a change, we can stop them from making that change, is what that's for.
My point, though, is you can create the same conceptual structure by a policy between the three boards that are part of the DPW Commission. And that's just sitting at the table and working together, saying, we've got an issue, how can we work with this? Are we okay if we write a policy and now we have a DPW Commission policy? Like, book of policies, just like the administrative policies that you have or lost. I don't know, but there was a big manual of finance and administration policies.
We do have them.
Thank you. Because there was a time when someone said, I can't find them.
No, I can find them, we find them.
So, you do the same thing at the DPW and come to agreements on specific items, so you can work through that. So if it's, if there's an expenditure greater than $3,000 or $5,000, a package we all agree will go to the accountant to do a review of it. And the accountant can work with the town administrator, whoever at that point, treasurer, depending on the situation. You know, the funding mechanism, the whole borrowing structure for it. It's just, I'm just saying, this is where I think, kind of what Tom was saying is, you don't need to go rewrite the acts with the state. You just need to get at the table with an open mind, saying we have issues, and then recognize, like all things in government, everything's a negotiation. So you can't come to the table and say, if I don't get what I want, it's not working. You've got to figure out what you give and take to make it work. And that's just how it works. And I know it's frustrating, it can be, but it's just as time-consuming as, well, managing whatever this turns into. Because it won't happen overnight, even once you send it up there. So, it just means that you continue to ensure that other people are involved in the process. So I'm just suggesting, from my perspective, just at the table.
Any other comments?
One last one, you know, in regards to, like, what's in the best interest of the town? If we wrote, if this goes through, we actually vote, there's a roads commission, in the same theory that water's for water, sewer's for sewer, roads for roads. Like, there's, it's still has, now we're still looking at who, what's in the best interest of the town. If the Select Board is involved with this commission, the way it is now, they have the, they have the ability to say, yeah, no, this is not in the best interest of the town, we don't think this is right. And it's more direct level management than saying, you people are going to just advise us of what's going on. It's going to add more red tape, it's going to lengthen the process to getting things approved. Because now, this roads commission's got to go to the Select Board meeting, advise the Select Board, they've got to make a decision, et cetera.
Understood.
That's how I see it.
I'm going to open it up, John, for the finance committee, for any additional comments?
I'm just going to add, this is the first time I've heard this discussed without the motion, you know, because normally, it's like turning into an argument, and I appreciate it. Jake, you added something that I haven't heard yet, right? Matt, mirror on what you said earlier, like, there hasn't been like a big public hearing about this, in a lot of discussion. It could be the best idea in the world, right? Rather than abolishing or repealing and replacing, like, I think you guys should work with what's there. Maureen pointed out, if it's about the purchase orders, or about the spending and a little bit oversight, like, work, I've watched meetings where Mr. Caruso and Mr. Chase seem like, they were like the go-between with the superintendent and Tammy. I think there's reason there, it just needs to be like sounded out, you know, and I've said it two other times, communications. Like, there's no talking, you know.
I speak on that?
Yeah.
So on that meeting, I was not aware of anything that was going on.
Yeah.
The open meeting law was totally, there was no, I literally went in there, I had all the information that they could have had, and they could have asked me, but nothing was on there. So I went in to not even be prepared, because no communications ever made with the town administrator. Highway superintendent's supposed to let me know when he's going out of town, if he's not going to be around, I never get notified. So with that, that we saw on there, that was me being like, totally not included on anything.
No, I, I'm not saying you acted any way other than I would have acted, right? Like, the whole meeting had like an ambush.
Yeah, I was ambushed, absolutely.
You know, from both sides, you know, there's something being brought up that they're unaware of. You know, and John, I've said this before, you have passion, you have energy, you have effort, that you like care, like, you want to make better. I just don't think enough conversations have been had, and, you know, I think it needs to be had. You know, I just, I don't see how, you know, this is now the fourth time we've talked about this. And, you know, I'll go to the public hearing, you know, I'm interested.
You know, I certainly was pushing for a public hearing on it. Unfortunately, June 19th was, no, 19th was the only option at that point.
Yeah, sorry, because we were going to do it on the 18th, but we couldn't because of Juneteenth.
Unfortunately, you know, I'm going to do my best to get the information out to everyone. If people come to town meeting and say, we agree with you, great. If they say, we don't agree with you, I understand. And if they say, we don't have enough information, then that's absolutely on me.
Yeah, it's not that you haven't put it out there.
It's not on you. There's only so much you can do with an idea. An idea that is significant in people's lives, because they view this as a real, okay, not attack, not assault, but a change in their life's working conditions. And they're going to fight back, without having the opportunity to sit across the table from you and say, what do you think about this? I hate to agree with Matt, because God knows, most of the time, he's going to win. But I do agree with Matt, he says. Sitting down and trying to really struggle through what isn't on the state, you know, what we're supposed to be doing, and saying, oh, we are supposed, we do have more control and power, the Select Board does, than we've been exercising. Now, there's no question that there's language in there that says, in order to get rid of the superintendent, it's a unanimous vote, okay?
He also has.
Well, I think it's majority, right? And that's not a, that's not a full process.
And I mean, I'm, I'm, that's not a problem, I mean, I get that. But my concern just is, if you ram this down people's throat, I've learned the hard way about this, okay? If you ram something down people's throat, most of the time, you just kind of get vomit on your shoes. Because this is their livelihood, this is the way they've been operating, and to say, we're going to change everything now. I think we can get some of this just by conversation. Working, Tammy, it's hard for you, I know, you're a brand-new person, you know, you're saying, how come these people won't even listen to me, right? I know, it's difficult.
I think I'm going to go back with the communication, I guess I'm going to go with that, where I'm not ever included, or if I try to do something, all of a sudden, it's like a personal attack. I got to tell you right here, right now, I have no personal vendetta against anyone, no town employee. So when I'm working with the town accountant and I'm asking for certain things, I just expect that people understand that's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to do the best for the town, and I don't always get that.
After the meeting last week, what it was like, it kind of felt like it was the boys' room after everybody left. That was the conversation, it was like, this is a two-way, this isn't like, you know, like, the communication needs to start here, too. Like, you guys need to start.
Yeah, I absolutely start the conversation, but I don't always end up with the great results.
Is there any other comments from the, any member of the finance committee members, questions on this? I, a question for council, because I heard, you know, John mentioned, like, how rare is this current act that Berry has, the Act of 1988, compared to other? Do you have any idea of how rare it is compared to other towns?
I've never seen a commission like this. That's not to say it's not done at all, but there is definitely, I would say, a trend towards making departments run by individuals rather than large committees, because there are a number of inefficiencies whenever you have to go to a committee of nine people. But I do think that this particular setup of having a committee comprised of three different smaller committees is unusual, if not unique.
Unique is sounds better.
I'd like to, just to make a point about this concept of, oh, there should have been a public hearing. I don't think that public hearings, I mean, sorry, but.
Don't get it.
The same people are in this hearing, a few people might tune in, because Joy puts the thing on Facebook, but public hearings do not serve the purpose that people like to pretend they do. I've watched zoning articles that have been argued by the planning board in meeting after meeting and in a hearing, and then they get to the town meeting floor, and everyone says, this is the first I'm hearing about it. Because that's what everyone always says at town meeting, because that is the first they're hearing about it. I don't care how many hearings Berry has, when he, if he takes this to town meeting floor, it's going to be the first time everybody hears about it. Town meeting is a great place for everybody to get up and learn about things, and to argue, and for the, all of the commissioners to get up and say their piece, and for Maureen to say their, and for Matt to wax, and for Sam to get up, and everybody can argue about it, and say, this is a great idea, this is a terrible idea, this is an unbaked idea, come back to us next meeting, whatever it is people want to do, and then someone can make a motion. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's really good, I think this is exactly the kind of thing you should not pass over. I think you should go ahead and make the motion, and have a debate, and then at the end of that, if the town feels one way or the other, they can vote one way or the other.
I agree with you 100%, and I made a point to say, usually at town meetings, somebody will stand up and say to that person, this is the person hearing about it, I've heard this at 15 meetings, where have you been? So, nobody's going to get that opportunity this time. You know, they're not going to be able to say, I've heard this discussed at 15 meetings, I've heard the argument both ways, you know, you weren't there.
I don't know that that really makes a difference, though, right? So ultimately, the people in the room have, they're the legislature. They have to make the decision, and they all need to be informed. And the reality is, 98% of them did not, this is the first time they're hearing about it. So, that's a great, that's a great thing. And after they hear about it, they may well decide, as it often happens with zoning articles, this is too complicated, we don't understand, let's go back. And another thing that the town meeting can do, which ours usually doesn't, I can't remember any case of it doing this, they can appoint a committee if they want to, to go study this and come back with a recommendation to town meeting at the next annual or at the, at the next special. So the town could do that. They could actually appoint a commission to go study whether this is a good idea, if they think that it's more than the town meeting can handle. I think town meeting has tools available to do legislative work like this.
You might be the only one that knows those rules.
So you have to let everybody know that.
Matt, just the one thing, and I would like to clarify, because I may have missed this myself, despite my wife making sure I can't miss a thing in town anymore. Love her to death, she's gorgeous, I know it. But what I'm trying to get at is, when was this draft ever presented publicly for consumption?
Well, this is a new draft, this is the latest.
Has any ever been posted on the website or something to say, this is our draft, this is what we plan to present, so someone can actually read it, not just hear a couple people talking about stuff and they don't know what it's about, because they don't have the content of it in front of them? That's what a public hearing does.
That's also what a warrant does, which is the purpose of a warrant. So, I'm just saying, the warrant is a warning to the town.
Two weeks prior to the meeting.
Sure, but how long's it take to read? It's only a page. So, I, yeah, that's exactly what a warrant is.
Consume, talk to people, get opinions, you're saying do all that in two weeks. That should be more than enough for the average person who's voting on this to understand what it means, and how it impacts the people that work here.
But I, I would say that everyone at town meeting can decide for themselves if they've had enough time to review it or not.
You're right, I'm not saying you're wrong, John, I'm just, my point about the public hearings was about, it gives people that, and you're not doing it in a warrant where you've spent three hours talking about everything else, and at the very end of it, everybody's tired, and you're barely getting through it, and now it's over. That was my point. Usually, I always thought, when you're dealing with acts, or bylaws, or any change in law that affects the town, you generally want to have a separate meeting just about that, and give people a chance to hear it and understand it before you put it in front of them to vote on it. And that didn't happen, if I'm correct, on any of the ones on this warrant.
John tried to get a meeting this week, but Jason was away, so it just didn't work.
Okay, we're gonna, so.
I'll make the motion to defer.
You did defer last time, I do just want to add some last comments to this. You know, I do appreciate, John, you taking some advice and updating or editing the draft here. My personal opinion, I do feel it's a little rushed, right? I think it's time to digest, because it's a big impact. But I do also feel that there's language in that, commission or not, I think there's language that, it says the commission has to refer to the personnel board, which has been a commission. So there's outdated language in the act, and I do feel that there is need to make changes. But we also want to make sure we don't alienate the key stakeholders, that these changes are going to have facts. And that's where time for a little bit more discussion can be better served, in my opinion, with that, rather than trying to get it out right away. We went through these similar challenges with the town administrator bylaw.
Yes.
And it was kind of pushed out, rushed out a little bit at town meeting last year, the language resolved, disarrayed. It went through many stages to be improved, and then eventually passed a special town meeting. So, you may be on the correct path. I, my opinion was, it does feel, for me, it feels rushed, that's what I'm going to, but I do like that you're working to improve it in the short period of time.
Absolutely, and I see this, if it doesn't go here, it's an opportunity to at least get it out there, get more conversation started, you know, it's, you know, having the warrant actually signed and official now, being able to share that with everyone, you know, I think we're, I'm still, you know, excited to have this go up at town meeting. I think it's, you know, I wouldn't put it up here if I didn't think it was best for the town.
I'm going to have to bring like a Red Bull or something to town. I have a feeling there's going to be some debate on this conversation. So we do have a motion, the finance committee, to defer our recommendations.
I, just until you get to talk to the DPW next week, you know, I.
We have a motion and a second to defer a recommendation for Article 21, all in favor?
Hi.
Article 22, so we can. Article twenty-two, so we, we can, I know it's directly related, right? We talked about this, Article twenty-two is directly related to Article twenty-one.
Yeah, so Article twenty-two is not necessary for Article twenty-one, but Article twenty-one would be, Article twenty-two would have to be passed over.
Correct. But in the sake of understanding everything as written, we will not ignore Article twenty-two, even though it's getting late. Road commission bylaw, sponsored by the select board, to see if the town will approve to amend the code of the town of Berry by adding a new Article five to chapter eighteen. Boards, committees, and commissions relative to the establishment of a road commission as shown below or take any other action relative thereto. And this article, in essence, establishes the roads commission, which is currently, so I just want to make sure I've corrected. So, as a DPW stands now, it's a highway commission, and that's the select board.
Yes.
So this would be, the select board would then have the ability to initially appoint, and then they would be
These would be elected.
No, these would be elected individuals, so the select board would not have that authority to appoint.
Okay, and this would create a separate commission, but that essentially flows up to the select board.
For, for certain things, it has to, like, chapter ninety.
Yeah.
But to the, I, I tried to create, to the extent possible, a situation where they would take the responsibilities as far as design matters go, transportation policies, parking regulations, things like that, that they would be responsible for those.
So what happens in the instance, there's an unexpected vacancy in the middle of a term? Who would the select board be responsible for appointing a position?
Same as
Yeah, it would be the same as the sewer or water commission, where the select board would pick someone.
Together with the remaining
Together with
Yes.
Thank you for saying that.
Okay, just, I want to make sure I understand. Any, any questions, comments on Article twenty-two?
And I'll, I'll just say one other thing, the, the, the fact that this is a separate article allows this to be established by town meeting and not through state legislature. So it's not going to be something that would take an act of state legislature to change in the future.
Now, abolishing that other rule, though, that, does that have to go through the state legislator?
So this would be, the, the, like, the opening paragraph of that essentially is us asking the state legislature to change that for us.
And they could say, they could say no.
They could, it's unlikely, they could.
I get it, I get it, yeah.
And they, they do tend to not
In theory, they could, I, I get, I get that probably. Any other comments on twenty-two?
Benefits versus having this select board remain as they are?
Um, I think the, the big benefit there is that the town will have more direct representation in selecting who handles road issues. I think, you know, for, for the most part, when someone's running for select board, the bigger focus tends to be on personnel, financial aspects. I think the road part of it tends to get overlooked in most cases. And I think there are a lot of people in town who have road expertise that probably wouldn't want to serve on the select board to do all of those things, but might be more comfortable
What are you saying, John?
I'm saying that it's, I, I think there is other expertise within town that could be pulled on for this, and I think it would give voters a better voice in who those are in particular.
Anything further? So we did not make a recommendation on Article twenty-two, we defer on Article twenty-one, which we, they're kind of tied hand in hand to each other?
They are, and they're not. Yeah.
It's one of those, like, every square is a rectangle, not every rectangle is a square.
I, I guess, I, I would make a recommendation to defer this, and that would be because I mean, we should discuss it with everybody. But this one, uh,
Is that an official motion to defer?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So we have a motion to defer our recommendation on Article twenty-two. We have a motion and a second to defer on Article twenty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I believe that is the end. We need a motion unless anyone has any other discussion.
No, you want your motion.
Make a motion to close the finance committee hearing.
We have a motion to adjourn the public hearing, uh, for the finance committee? We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing for the finance committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Uh, second.
Motion made, seconded, adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.